Tuesday, January ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The public can also access this meeting via WebEx. The Burlington School Committee will hear public comments in person and virtually. Meetings are also broadcast live on Burlington Cable Access TV, BCAT, and video and audio recordings are being made. This meeting of the Burlington School Committee is being held in person at the School Committee Room in the Burlington Central Office. Members of the public are welcome to attend this meeting, and I want to welcome everyone who's here tonight. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on the agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. If you are participating remotely, then the numbers are... The meeting number is two-three-three-five-four-three-nine-zero-five-five-zero, and the meeting password is Tuesday. If you are participating... If you speak remotely, please identify yourself by typing your name on the screen in advance and verbally, once you are identified, to speak. We request that you please turn on your camera. Comments and statements are limited to three minutes for public participation. The Burlington Public Schools Equity Statement. Educational equity means that every child belongs and receives whatever support they need to develop their full academic, emotional, and social potential to learn and thrive every day. This begins with kindness and valuing the humanity of every child and individual. So the next item on the agenda is the approval of the warrant. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. And let's see, I think we are all here tonight, so I think we can do... We don't need a roll call. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye, that's five-zero-zero. Thank you. And next is the approval of the meeting minutes from twelve-twelve-twenty-three. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. All right, thank you Ms. Bond and Ms. Monaco. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? And the chair votes aye, that's five-zero-zero. Now, is public participation for topics that are not on the agenda? Is there someone who's here tonight who has an issue they want to raise with the school committee present? And please come on up. And you'll... And would you please state your name and why you're here? Thank you.
My name is Sydney Gilio. I'm a senior at Burlington High School. And I am here on behalf of Burlington students to request to fly the Pro-Life Flag from Monday, January fifteenth through Sunday, January twenty-first to honor Sanctity of Life Month. We are constantly reminded at school that we should be inclusive and equitable, especially to those in our society that are marginalized. The unborn are the most discriminated against group of humankind. Since nineteen seventy-three, over sixty million babies have lost the opportunity to live outside the womb because their constitutional rights have not been protected. The Pro-Life Flag is symbolic of both unborn children and their mothers. The flag depicts two feet, representing the child, two hands, representing the mother, and two stripes and two main colors. The flag emphasizes the lives present in a pregnancy. In a matter of two weeks, I have gathered just under fifty signatures to petition for the flag to be flown on a school flagpole at the middle and high school during the aforementioned week. As a girl who was born to a young, single mom, this representation is important to me. We, the students of Burlington Public Schools, hope that flying the Pro-Life Flag will raise awareness in the local community and beyond to better support equity and inclusion for such an underprivileged part of our community and nation. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. We don't usually give... We're not going to be able to give you an answer tonight. It's something that we can consider. Dr. Conti, do you have a suggestion about how to proceed here?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Could you just repeat the dates again? I'm sorry, I missed the dates, I apologize.
Monday, January fifteenth through Sunday, January twenty-first.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I need to review the policy manual to see if there's any sort of something I'm missing, and then we can have a conversation about it. Does that week have any significance? If it takes me a few extra days to do that, would another week be okay? Or is that a significant week? I just want to make sure. And I'm asking sincerely. If my research takes longer, I just don't want to miss something.
I think as long as it's in the month of January, if it takes a few extra days, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming and talking with us. All right. Is there anyone else in the audience who's here to speak for public participation time or online? Nobody's online. Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not sure, again, this could fall under other announcements, but before the meeting got started, we've had some significant losses in the community of people who are connected to the schools. If you were planning on doing this, Madam Chair, I don't want to...
Please, go right ahead. Thank you, I want to recognize people.
So Adrian Gerbrand's longtime instructional assistant passed away. Her daughter-in-law, Laura, is a teacher for us at Francis Wyman. Gary Heldenberg, again, a parent. And again, I know his family is very connected to the school district and died much too young after a battle with an illness. Al Fay, who I know people were trying to attend his viewing this evening in a tribute to his life and service to Burlington. I heard it's many hours to even to get close to Sullivan's. Again, Al's daughter Lynn, again, is a teacher for us at Francis Wyman. And his niece Jane Lynch is also a teacher for us at the middle school. I just remember Al always being very welcoming, and a lot of the kids that I've met really looked forward to the fire truck, the ride on the fire truck and the connection. So again, I think Al just provided great life to the community, and he'll be missed. And then I just heard this evening that Mary Lou McQuinn, former Fox Hill teacher, longtime teacher, and very active member of the Burlington Science Center and the Burlington Scholarship Foundation for many, many years, passed away over the weekend. So I know that I heard from John Papadopoulos, Wendy Pavlicek, and Sean are all there in our thoughts. They're like her family. And again, Mary Lou gave back tremendously even after her teaching career at Fox Hill. So again, before we got too far in the agenda, I wanted to, if we could just have a moment of silence for those members of our community.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you to all of those people for their commitments and our condolences to their families. Thank you. So now we will begin our information and reports section. And that brings us to Mr. Shannon, our student representative. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you. And Dr. Conti, that was very well put, and I think that any loss in the community is one that is going to be tough and we need to work through. But to cover just the past few weeks in the Burlington School community, we had an extraordinary student athlete, Cedric Rodriguez, surpassed the thousand-point mark. Very, very props to him. Very, very hard to do. I know last year we also had one of the girls' players, Liv Penya, do it. So kind of cool to see two back-to-back years. BHS musicians excelled at the district music festival that they had this past weekend. Eight students were able to take home the all-state recognition, which is kind of like a recommendation for them to attend the all-state conference, which is also very, very exciting. The English department had the Poetry Out Loud finals, which is just a thing that we run at the school. I know that I heard some little chatter about that earlier, and we saw... Perfect. We actually have the results. There were, for runners-up, there were Chloe Cobumby, Sonya Solakar, Partiv, Soham Shah, Windsor Mizura, Cassie Herrera. Then third place was Daniel Jimenez. Second place, Jack Carey. And first place was Therese Kozinski. And one thing I found out about Therese is that she was one of the first freshmen to win in the all, like, school, like, tournament. And freshmen winning isn't something that I've seen or heard of, so props to her. It's very hard to do, even as a senior. And I think that she really did well. I was actually in attendance, I saw, I think I saw you guys in the back. Very, very... She was very good. All the recitations were very, very well done, and props to everyone who competed. And I was talking with one of the DECA presidents, I know the other one is here, Robbie. DECA will be holding the Best of BHS Comedic Pageant on February the eighth. It's very student-based and student-run, students participate, but community involvement is always welcome. And that's pretty much all I have. Midterm exams are coming up. Very fun times for students. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Could you just repeat the name of our new poet laureate? Therese? I didn't catch.
Therese Kozinski.
Kozinski, thank you. All right. Any further comments about Matt's report? Dr. Conti?
No, I just want to ask Mr. Sullivan to pass on to Shannon, the English department, just what a great event Poetry Out Loud is. It's something I look forward to every year. So thank you. It's rare that a high school has every student memorize and recite a poem. I always mention it's not something that's measured on MCAS, but it's a great life skill that we ask our students to do. Getting up and speaking and reciting something that's memorized in front of your classmates takes a lot of bravery, and again, our students do it particularly well. And the committee, sort of, we've always asked our poet laureate to come and do a recitation for the committee. So we'll see when Therese is available, and we'll get the pleasure of hearing her recite. So you'll have that coming up. So Mark, thanks to...
Thank you. Yes. All right. And now we'll move on to subcommittee reports. Are there any subcommittees that have met that want to make a report this time? I think this might... Well, we'll do the other later when it's listed, okay? So, and Ways and Means, I'm not sure. Doesn't look like there's somebody right now who's here from Ways and Means. Steve's online. Oh, do... Okay, not showing up on my screen. Okay. Oh, it's... Okay. So Mr. Moore, is there anything from the Ways and Means Committee today? Thank you.
No report to have today.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have some fiscal updates later in the meeting, but thank you. And are there other announcements that people would like to make?
Madam Chair, just very briefly, as you know, I just wanted to thank our cafeteria staff and our custodial staff, Bob. We started composting with Black Earth in the kitchens this week. And so I know that that was something, Ms. Simon, you've been very interested in for many, many years. And we are beginning that journey and starting to compost there. Mr. Sullivan, you're meeting with the Student for Environmental Action about having students join the composting effort in the high school cafeteria. I think that's coming up. And Mrs. Monaco, I wanted to share, brought props for the committee. I think you're adamant about the styrofoam trays. What we had agreed to as a committee is we would use our inventory down. And Bob, you're saying we're approaching the end of that inventory, and we're using a different type of tray. Is that...
It's true, yes. It's also in Dr. Chen's Journey to Care's report as well, too. So there's some pictures of some products that we have replaced styrofoam and plastic with.
So again, silverware... Not silverware, I can't call it that.
Utensils.
Plastic ware.
Utensils.
Utensils, sorry. We're working through those, our inventory as well.
We're still going through inventory.
And then we're going to be moving towards a...
Compostable product.
A compostable product. So again, I know it's never as instantaneous as people would like, but we are starting our compostable journey.
Great. Sounds good. All right. Are there other announcements that people have? I wanted to announce that next week, on Wednesday, January seventeenth, is a Civic Expo that's being organized by the town and the Burlington Buzz in order to get people out and expose people to all the various town departments and such. It's Wednesday, the seventeenth, from five to seven. It will be held at the Senior Center, at the Kelly Marie Wing of the building there on Center Street. And I know it does conflict with the kindergarten information night, so there are other, lots of things to do in Burlington. But we are hoping that the school department will have information there. Has that been finalized?
I know the Science Center will be in attendance, and we'll have a presence.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Any other announcements? No. All right. Now, moving on to learning equity and thriving.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think some of this is going to be relatively straightforward. We're joined tonight by Chrissy Concepcion. She'll be doing a report later in the agenda. We are implementing a new social-emotional learning curriculum at the elementary level. The creator of that curriculum, Wayfinder, has been very impressed with the implementation in Burlington and Ms. Concepcion's stewardship of that. So much so that they've asked her out to a Wayfinder Social-Emotional Learning Partner Consortium in Oceanside, California, from January thirty-first through February second. They really want her to participate and talk about the implementation in Burlington. Wayfinder is covering all of her expenses and just really want her expertise. And again, I recommend that committee approve out-of-state travel for Ms. Concepcion to attend the Wayfinder Social-Emotional Learning Partner Consortium. And again, it's because of her efforts that she is being asked to participate. And I do think it reflects well on the district, the community, and everything. So Chrissy, thank you for all of your work.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Second. Before we vote, I just also want to thank Chrissy Concepcion for all the work you've done and for getting the Wayfinder program, you know, chosen and implemented. At least, we're halfway through the year, and I hear good things from staff and from parents. So thank you very much for that. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, that's five-zero-zero.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now, for my favorite part of the agenda, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Chen for the Journey to Cares. Lisa.
Thank you very much, Dr. Conti. I know Mr. Kuna's gonna... He's getting the presentation up there. First picture, please. All right, excellent. We're going to go over these pictures. As you can see, there's a principal of the day there. There's a gingerbread man performance. There's the robotics team. There's the inspiration awards. There's Patrick Lyons providing us with some professional development with school safety. We see our school chair there with, very much with recycling there. And we see some of our high school students there also painting the murals. Next, we see Joe Otobato there giving what he often does is parent information. This is on stress and anxiety. Again, we have time with the BPS Burlington police officers. They're giving us... There's Patrick Lyons doing the safety protocol again for us. Our first January graduate from the Simon Youth Academy. BIPOC, our affinity group, again, robotics. And this is our... We have eight students who went this year to our IDEAS conference. Next, please. Here, again, we have some pictures of some students. They're involved with our computer science. There is an agenda of what happened on January second. Those are the gentlemen on the robotics team, and those are a group of lovely teachers at Memorial. And they're being treated to some delicious coffee. I did not know there was coffee trucks, but they do exist. All right, next. There's Wendy Pavlicek, and she's introducing a lot of the animals to the Science Center. There is the famous Chrissy Concepcion. We can afford her now, but maybe not later. She's giving a presentation in New Orleans, Louisiana. There are kudos to her. All those people are her audience members, listening to what she has to say, which is exciting. And again, some of the artwork that's going on at the high school. Next, here we have Carrie Lamprey, who with Emerson, went on a trip to Guatemala to take a look at some of our students' families and helped the students there as well, too, since we have a lot of the brothers and sisters here over here, here at Burlington High School. Next, and we will hear a very special report from the DECA co-president in a few minutes. But here are some pictures of the DECA conference. And also there, you see some of our students at an event. And you also see Shannon Janovitz doing the poetry... Janovitz, I'm so sorry. Shannon Janovitz doing the Poetry Out Loud. And that was a fantastic performance of all our students. Okay. Next. All right. I attended the BIPOC, which is the Black Indigenous People of Color affinity group meeting. We processed with the leader how to continue to increase our numbers and participation, met with the Director of Summer Literacy Program and Assistant Principal to begin planning and organizing our summer school programming. Again, as you saw, we attended the Gingerbread Musical for pre-K students, and I saw Ms. Martha Simons there. We also, with Dr. Conti, went to see the Principal of the Day at Memorial, who was a young man, in which Patricia English-Sanders said that she would like to hire as the new Assistant Principal. Worked with the instructional team to finalize the January second PD and worked with Dr. Conti to plan the opening for the January second PD. Next. Worked with the Director of the Student Information Office and Open Architect to review the dashboards for administrators and teachers. Met with the Communication Officer to plan and launch out January second. Met with the Director of Technology to plan the Burlington Cybersecurity Incident Response Plan to be held at the Administrative Council Meeting in spring. And we're also working on the town side with that, and that came from a grant. Want to say thank you to Jose de Sousa for his work with that. Met with the Department Chair of BHS Math to review the Algebra One planning. And later on, Principal Mark Sullivan and Joe Otobato will talk about some things that we've done a little bit differently, especially for students who would like to take Algebra One and who would like to skip Algebra One to take Geometry. Attended the math curriculum meeting with Dr. Katery Thunder. Next. And again, you saw pictures of the BHS robotics team and the inspiration award that happens at the high school. We again saw Joe Otobato, who hosted a parent meeting. And those parent meetings are very well-attended, and I think one of the things he does is he really talks about really important topics that parents want to know. And there's an RSVP through Parent Squares, well, too. Attended the instructional assistant negotiations or contracts. Facilitated the tabletop exercises with the School Safety Task Force Team and Captain Dan Hanifin. And that's been going extremely well. There's going to be another School Safety Task Force meeting with Captain Dan Hanifin and the Police Department, taking a look at another set of exercises for administrators to do. The BHS students attended the IDEAS Student Conference. And the principal and the superintendent followed up with the students because a lot of these students want to put together the ideas that they learned in the student conference and start to have conversations with other students about them. Attended the Poetry Out Loud Assembly on January eighth. Hosted the PD session on January ninth. Planned with Dr. Lupini, a former superintendent, on the session of supervision and evaluation that is also part of the professional development for administrators. Next, we're preparing for the Kindergarten Information Night on January seventeenth for incoming kindergarten families. We rolled out Open Architect for all elementary teachers on January second. We have future dates, so that we're going to be going to individual schools. Pine Glen will be on Wednesday, January tenth, at two-thirty. Francis Wyman will be on Wednesday, January twenty-fourth, at two-thirty. We are still getting the times for Francis Wyman, the middle school, and the high school. And Memorial's been completed. And I can tell you that the staff are really appreciative of having a dashboard that's very easy, all in one place. Instead of having to search one database, one database, one database, it's all there. I think it's really going to help the conversation further along so that instead of having to pull, take the time to pull data, you're just looking at the data. You can print it out. You can give it to parents and have a conversation about where students are with, along with math, their reading levels. So this is something very exciting for the teachers. And they're going to be receiving training from Robin Milano on this. I'm so sorry. Milliano. I'm working on the Italian. I'm getting Italian lessons. Yes, I'm so sorry. Coordinated Aspen Training on the new IP to be rolled out in 2025. That is with Christina Chicalini. Also, the Robin Milano... Milliano registered forty-one students since November first. That's forty-one students that we've had. Set up Parent Square to include Sprouts and Child Development families. Kindergartens also enjoyed the computer science lesson with Mrs. Arzoni. The B-Bot Robots through the maze, that was the picture you saw. There's been a lot of book tastings that are going on. So instead of the kind of quote-unquote wine tastings, there are book tastings, all right? That's occurring at the Burlington High School. And at the Memorial, students in the third, fourth, and fifth grade were offered the choice to join a lunch book group. Next, in our literacy KLT comprehension follow-up for all kindergarten-grade-one teachers in January, the writing content follow-up in the middle school in late January and early February. Also, working on a pilot for pre-K math curriculum in which we met earlier today with a consultant just to take a look at that. A lot... There's been a lot of growth, believe it or not, a lot of great growth already with our pre-K students. So it's very exciting to see Carrie Fortinato planning with Deb Clark and also some of the pre-K teachers and getting them started in math. It's just very exciting. She did some coaching. And then Family Math Night, you know how we've been talking about that? That's in the books now. Francis Wyman, excuse me. Fox Hill on Monday, January twenty-second, from six-thirty to eight. This is all going to be at the Cafeteria, interactive. Pine Glen on Monday, January twenty-ninth, six-thirty to eight o'clock. Memorial, the same day, from six to seven-thirty. Francis Wyman on Monday, January thirtieth, from six to seven-thirty PM. So really invite all of you just to learn more about what the math program is occurring at the elementary schools. A lot of interactive activities going on there. A lot of planning's been going on with a math specialist.
Can I interrupt for one second? We have January twenty-ninth and January thirtieth listed as Mondays, and so I just wanted to be clear.
Oh, okay. Yes, yes.
I'm not sure which is which, but just people could check.
Twenty-ninth is the Monday.
Twenty-ninth is the Monday, so the Tuesday is a...
Is the January thirtieth.
The January thirtieth at Francis Wyman.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I will make that change. Thank you so much. All right. The next thing is that Star Labs or Science have been occurring and participating in all schools. At the same time, you saw in the picture the Hedgehog programs have been occurring. Thirty-five Burlington families participated in the Animal Vacation Foster Program. So during winter break, some animals went home with families. And they filmed the second episode of Critter Corner, animal program in the BCAT Studios. And we're continuing to revise the fifth-grade ecosystem unit. Also, with the Social Studies Department, they're working on aligning the Martin Luther King lessons to be distributed over the holiday. At the same time, the Director of English Learner Education and IT Member Emerson Perez, as you saw in the picture, they visited the students' families in Guatemala to learn more about their home cultures and educational experiences. So an upcoming project will focus on creating a summer camp that will bring the children... that will bring the children's books, literacy practices, and technology experiences to their younger siblings at their current BPS students, who are currently living in Guatemala. So that's very exciting. And also, she provided elementary teachers with how to use Elevation, which is a new platform that uses district data to support teachers with identifying appropriate strategies for English learner students and provided them with professional development modules. Next, as you saw in the picture, the Director of Mental Health, Chrissy Concepcion, attended and presented at the 2023 Advancing School Mental Health Conference. And she really wrote about what's occurring here in Burlington. So kudos to her in receiving such an honor to present to so many people and in showcasing what we do here at Burlington Public Schools. She also helped very much, assisted in a lot of the planning of the January 2nd focus, which was on the social, emotional learning and trauma-informed practices. And she'll be talking tonight about the school climate survey. Hired the Family Community Engagement Community Council Liaison and is continuing to work with the District School Safety Committee or the School Safety Task Force and Dr. Purchase to address school safety and preventive measures to implement. And then Marshall, next. Marshall Simon, middle school and Burlington High School students went to the Council of Aging to serve lunch. You saw that in a picture. And again, helped with the planning. This is Christina Chicalini and her department in the professional development to provide instructional assistance with training and also with special education staff with training on the new IP system. Now, at this point in time, we're going to have Robert Giselle come up. He's going to talk about, he is the co-president of the Burlington DECA Chapter. He's going to talk about the DECA Conference. Thank you, Robert, for joining us tonight.
Welcome, Robert. So if you want to give your own introduction, if you'd like.
Thank you, Dr. Chen, for having me this evening to speak. My name's Robert Geswell. I'm a senior here at Burlington High School. In addition to my course load, as a student, I am an inter-scholastic athlete as well as the co-president of the Burlington DECA Chapter. DECA is an international organization with over 225,000 members worldwide, spanning in over 30 countries around the world. DECA prepares emerging leaders and entrepreneurs for careers in hospitality, finance, marketing, business management and administration, and entrepreneurship. Members compete in various business topics through prepared papers, presentations, and case study-based role plays. Four weeks ago, our DECA District of 22 schools met for our annual district competition. This is a two-day conference that had approximately 1,500 members in attendance. My advisors, Krista Anderson and Danielle Truvi, prepare and coordinate the district conference for the entire district annually. This is in addition to their other responsibilities as chapter advisors and even more importantly, their duties as business educators here at Burlington High School. Now for the amazing news. Burlington had 61 members placed in the top seven of their categories. These students qualified to represent Burlington High School DECA at the state conference in March. Also, we are taking additional four members to fill the Quiz Bowl Trivia Team as well as two more students to represent our school-based enterprise or our school store. This is a total of 67 individuals, which will be our most in history for our chapter. Personally, I placed first in my sales pitch for hospitality and tourism professional selling. Thank you. Ms. Simon had the opportunity to hear this pitch while she was in attendance at the conference last month. My judge noticed my professional demeanor, well-prepared presentation, clear knowledge of hospitality service, and display of confidence in my pitch. These are skills I attribute to DECA and my business classes. I competed on day one of the conference. And then on day two, I returned to the conference center with the purpose of assisting my advisors, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Truvi, in the running of the conference. I also had the pleasure of showing Ms. Martha Simon around the conference and showing her the ins and outs of various DECA competitions.
And you were willing to be in that silly photo with me with the top hats?
Yes, of course. In closing, I just wanted to thank Assistant Superintendent Dr. Chen for inviting me to speak this evening. I also want to thank Ms. Simon for joining me last month at the conference. So she was able to see firsthand the incredible opportunities provided to students through DECA. Additionally, I want to thank all those in attendance here tonight for your time and support of our DECA and business programs. Most recently, I know that my business teachers are working to bring the DESI Business and Finance Pathway to Burlington High School to complement the existing Computer Science Pathway. And I know my teachers and the business students, thank you for your support with that endeavor. It is refreshing for me to know that those who make important decisions about our education care to hear from us, the students. There have been so many fantastic opportunities available to us, from the expansive business classes to the unbelievable travel opportunities through DECA and our business classes. Personally, I have had the opportunity to travel to Washington DC, Austin, Texas, Orlando, Florida, Washington DC, and Atlanta, Georgia. And our chapter hopes to be making the trip to Anaheim, California in the spring for the international competition. I also want to take the opportunity to thank my business teachers and advisors, Krista Anderson and Danielle Truvi, for preparing me to be able to write a piece like this and helping me gain the public speaking skills to give this speech and for teaching me professional skills and preparing me for my future. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And you definitely have learned those skills. That's a very credible presentation you gave. And I can, I can confirm that every one of those students that we brought to the DECA Conference from our school, as well as the other schools, were very involved and excited and committed to the work they were doing. And they were having fun, too, on the off time. So that was really great. Is there someone who wants to make other comments now? Yes, Ms. Monaco?
I just want to say that you did a great job. That presentation was outstanding.
Thank you.
Good luck at the state level.
Thank you.
Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Mr. Brooks?
I'm going to go one up, and I'm going to hope you guys make it to the national competition. And I'm, and do well there as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry. And if I, just actually, there was one thing you said at the beginning. People, you said, people write a paper. And as, as Robert said, I got to hear his presentation. It's not just a paper. He had a binder that was filled with original documents and, you know, organized in a way that would be a pitch in real life. So it wasn't just a paper, although it was the amount of work and extent and research that you might have done for the paper. So excellent job. Yes, Dr. Conti?
Madam Chair, I'm actually, Robert, just to give you some really truthful feedback is, I'm a little frustrated, actually, with your presence here. The standard you set is hard for us to present all the time to, to follow. So next time, bring it down a notch or two, just to, just to help us out, okay?
Yes.
All right. Great job.
Thank you.
Dr. Chen, any other comments? We're going to continue with Journey to CARES. Okay.
Thank you again, Robert. So with business and finance team, completed the salary budget transfers for teacher grade changes as of October 31st. Worked on the Instructional Assistant Financial Proposals. Attended the DESI webinar, expanded homeless shelter data collection, and worked with the Athletics Department on implementing a new electronic system for game ticket sales. Next, Communication Team. On January 1st, BPS staff will be moving to Parent Square to access all communication needs for the districts and families. She continues to analyze, that's Laura Angelo, using social media for the district. Staff member helped with the January PD. She's continuing designing the comps and working with our new web provider to relay the district's mission, values, and style guide to present of those in the community and the district, working with the Student Information Office to provide information on kindergarten registration. Next, with the Human Resource Team, they began the process to hire a new Assistant Director of Child Care, organized an implicit bias training where 10 school secretaries attended. Attended training on workplace accommodations. And began a process to solicit grant findings for teacher diversification efforts. Next, the Nursing Team completed all VHS mandatory screenings, completed all Fox Hill mandatory screenings along with apostrophes. The Board of Health had a BPS vaccine clinic to support our students. It will continue this on a monthly basis. And the next one is on January 22nd. Scheduled and prepped for the January mandatory screenings at Frances Wyman and the middle school. Next, the Operations Team began VHS weather stripping project. Really want to thank Bob Kuna and all the custodial staff also for our first winter storm and making sure that all the pathways were cleared for us to be here at school. So thank you, Bob. I know that when I was here on Sunday, your gentlemen were working very hard, as well as you. Thank you. Started Frances Wyman Intercom Project Installation. IT room renovation is underway. Picked up donated furniture from local companies. As we can see, starting the composting in the kitchen, replaced items in the cafeteria with compostable options. I believe those, are they, are those napkins? I just want to make sure. The trays?
Those are trays to replace plastic containers. Not all plastic containers, some.
All right. And next, the Technology Team. This is a graph of all what the IT department has been doing when it comes to the ticket services. Next, they have addressed 324 ticket requests. Jose De Souza and his department helped coordinate and restructure the high school cafeteria and auditorium for areas to facilitate the wireless access during January 2nd PD. Updated the firmware for wireless access points. Began implementing a new email security measure. Jose and his team are always keeping us safe from, from cybersecurity attacks. Conducted an accuracy check on our staff devices inventory system and completed the first half, which is the 50 classroom devices, on the VHS light speed installation and refresh. And then finally, I know that Jill Graham is very proud of this picture. This happens to be one of our students for the Simon Youth Academy, who will be doing a January graduation. And so kudos to him. And just to show you that all the programming that you put in, it's about every single child, and not all children fit a certain type of education. And so I think here at Burlington, we offer a lot of opportunities for many children to excel. So very well done. Thank you, guys. And that's my report.
Dr. Conti, did you want to comment on, on that?
No, it just takes a remarkable amount of effort. We talk about graduation sometimes like it's easy or the next step or whatever. For many kids, it's a significant accomplishment, and our staff work incredibly hard. And so I want you to, as Lisa said, recognize that your support of an Alternative Day Program allowed this young man to get his high school diploma. Otherwise, he would not have. So if, I think you all deserve some credit. And it's hard sometimes. We talk about, you see spreadsheets, but don't necessarily see the results of those spreadsheets all the time. And I think part of the Journey to CARES is to sort of give you a glimpse of the, of the human impact of the decisions that you make. And again, so I just think it's, we're not going to give the amount of effort in care justice that the staff and the student, you know, put forth to earn this. But it is significant. So thank you. And we'll continue to report on getting as many students their high school diplomas. That's really the culmination of, of what our mission is. And so you should all be, feel, I think, part of that accomplishment as well. So thank you.
Okay. Does anyone else have any comments on Journey to CARES before we move on? Ms. Monaco?
Thank you, Lisa. That was very informative. And you reminded me that I spoke with Dr. Weiner today. And I, I want to thank the Board of Health for their work helping our students in that monthly clinic and Susan Luminallo and everyone involved. Thanks.
Anyone else?
I, I did want to comment, comment that I'm really pleased that we have the Journey to CARES report each meeting. And I know you've been, you and Lauren Angelo have been posting them now on the district website. So if people want to look, it's a quick run-through at the meeting here. But if people want to look through, it is all written down, and it is posted on the website. And there was a request about maybe also sending out like a ping through Parent Square. Is that underway at this point?
Yes, I'll be talking to Lauren Angelo to make sure that that occurs. So that, that our next step is always to make sure communication's consistent and with many, as many access points as possible.
Great. I think we're making progress on that. And parents do want to be able to get to it easily, I think. And the, the other thing I want to just mention here, which is sort of a, didn't get said, is that I know with the, the snowstorm, and there was some problem with, some problem with the bus on Monday. And I, I know there was a lot of emails going back and forth. And I know that Mr. Kuna, I didn't speak with Mr. Kuna. I didn't speak to anyone. I don't know the details. But I know that you've been working really hard to make sure those things go smoothly. And I think that there's two parts to, I wanted to mention that in the new, and Nicole, please, you know, keep me honest here, make sure I get it right. But the request for proposals that we're putting out for bus contract will include the technology to track the buses in real time, both for the district and for the parents. Is that accurate? So we are hoping, I mean, that doesn't fix last Monday, but we are aware that that can be a problem. And the other thing is that there will be penalties for the bus company if there are these kinds of problems in the new contract. Is that accurate also? Yes. And somebody, there would not be penalties for the bus drivers. Somebody thought that was a problem. But it would be for the bus company. Right? Yeah. So I just wanted to acknowledge, because I know there were a lot of upset families on Monday. But I don't even know how big of a problem it was. It might have been in one particular neighborhood. But we are aware, and I know Mr. Kuna spends a lot of his time trying to fix bus routes and make sure that the buses are getting out on time. So I want to thank you for that as well. Any other comments on that? Okay. So the next topic then, Dr. Conti, if you want to move on?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So typically, when we do the school committee reorganization, which occurs in April, or the first meeting in April, you get a list of committees that have historically been in place. School committee members can discuss, talk about which committees they, they want to participate in, sit on. You all are liaisons to a particular school that's listed there. What we're asking the committee to do is expand that list to include a liaison to a district-wide school safety committee. We put a lot of effort in school safety and our standard protocol prior to the pandemic. The pandemic sort of shifted our focus a little bit to personal safety. And now we're really getting back to our standard protocol and looking at other aspects of school safety that we really need to make sure that stay in the front of our, front of our mind and the front of our practice. So as Dr. Chen pointed out, we've done some professional development work. We're closely aligned with the Burlington Police. There are important community collaborations that need to occur if state, if safety is to be prioritized. And feel like having a school committee representative as part of this district safety committee would enhance that collaboration. So we'd really ask the committee if you could appoint or name a, a member to serve as a liaison on that committee. And again, I've been speaking to all of you. Many of you have different interests. And I know, Mr. Brooks, I don't want to speak for you. But I know that I've already relied on Mr. Brooks for some help with some safety communication. And I, I believe his professional expertise would also lend itself to moving our safety and security conversations forward. So again, I don't want to, I don't have the authority to nominate you. But, but again, I do think that's been, I've appreciated your support.
So I would like to suggest that we maybe do this similar to, we added another position, the liaison to the, for the LPAC recently. And people can discuss before or not, but I would entertain a motion to establish a liaison from the school committee to the district-wide safety. And then we can vote after that on a second motion. So...
Second.
All right. And any further discussion about establishing the liaison to the district-wide school safety committee? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Opposed, abstained, and the chair votes aye, that's five zero zero.
I move, we appoint Jeremy Brooks to that position.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Okay, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, and the chair votes aye, that's uh, five zero zero. Thank you for raising these issues. Thank you for participating already, Jeremy, um, and uh, good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No, I appreciate the uh, support from the committee and uh, Dr. Conti as well and uh, look forward to helping move some things along and uh, bring in some more uh, focus to safety for the committee.
Great.
Mr. Brooks, uh, would like to invite you to, again, to observe our next tabletop, which is on February twenty-seventh between nine and eleven thirty here. So, um, if you're available, it would be great to have you observe. So, thank you.
Alright, alright, moving on to the next topic, Dr. Conti.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Move forward, the school climate survey. So, I'd like to invite um, um, Ms. Christine Concepcion up to uh, discuss this. Again, I want to make sure I recognized um, um, Ms. Concepcion's efforts uh, to coordinate the school climate survey. Mrs., Ms., I'm trying to use all the right terms, Mrs. Chrissy, thank you for coming up. It's just easier for me.
He slips back to his old ways.
I do, I'm trying. And again, Chrissy, we'll go over some of the results from a fairly high uh, level. One of the comments that I think I've had when people got the results from the um, equity report, I think some of the comments were that it wasn't necessarily granular enough. And what I want to, um, it wasn't an investigation. The equity report was sort of a, an overall report of the organization. And it did make some suggestions. The, the, uh, what, what um, Mrs. Concepcion will um, show the committee is the, the uh, school climate survey really, really allows us to get very granular in terms of the, the feedback that we're, we're getting. So, um, I think um, if, if the equity report was, was lacking in some specificity for, for folks, I think the uh, school climate survey will continue to fill in that picture. So, um, again, Chrissy, with that, again, thank you for um, coordinating the survey itself and then um, moving forward. Um, I will say that the, the um, the tool that we used, that we purchased for um, providing communicate, uh, communication information to the, in regards to the Fox Hill decision, Thought Exchange. We utilized that tool for the um, school climate survey. So, we are getting more use out of that tool than just for the Fox Hill Building Committee. And Chrissy can talk a little bit about uh, the benefits of that, of that tool as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Bob's going to get my PowerPoint up. So, I'm gonna have lots of notes because there is lots of data here. Um, but thank you for having me. We're gonna do a brief um, preview or overview of the um, results from this year. It's the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school climate survey. So, just an overview of the school climate survey. Um, the timeline for participation for, for all stakeholders, which included parents and guardians, all BPS staff, elementary students in grades four and five, and all secondary students was between December fourth and Friday, December twenty-second. Again, it was offered to those stakeholders. The survey questions came from the Positive Behavioral Intervention and Support Center, also known as PBIS. This is our second year using um, this, these survey questions. So, although we did move the survey to the Thought Exchange platform, we continue to use the same consistent common measures and questions so that we could have some consistency in comparative data from last year. Um, information for the survey was shared with parents and guardians and all BPS staff via Parent Square. And was communicated that included an option for parents to opt their children out if they did not wish their children to participate in the school climate survey. Um, and with Thought Exchange, it was very easy to share um, the information via a link and a QR code for parents to access the survey. Just wanted to let you know some of the demographics that were taken into account. So, um, at the beginning of every single survey, the participants were asked to um, fill in some information in regards to demographics. These included um, their race and ethnicity, whether or not their child or themselves were um, receiving IEP services or in AP or honors level classes, their gender and gender identity, their grade level and their school attending. With all of the demographic questions, it also included an option for any of the participants to answer, prefer not to answer. Um, so as we go through some of the demographic data, um, I just wanted to let you know that um, in looking at the common measures or topics but down to the single question, we can sort and filter data by these demographics as well. Um, just an overview um, for the survey participation. So, we had six hundred and thirty-two parents and guardians participate in the survey. Um, the survey for the parents and guardians was completed in twelve different languages. Um, and we had respondents of students who were from the pre-K level all the way up to parents, guardians of grade twelve. Um, for BPS staff, there were four hundred and fourteen staff participants. Again, all staff were representative from staff from pre-K to twelve. Um, and staff, we saw a wide range in staff in regards to number of years of service with Burlington Public Schools, their role, whether they were an educator, a specialist, um, a counselor, and the primary grades taught. For our elementary grades, fourth and fifth, we had a total of five hundred and thirty-two participants. Um, and we saw that the survey was completed in English, Spanish, and Portuguese for our elementary students. Um, and we had participation from all four elementary schools. And for our secondary students, um, grade six through twelve, we had um, one thousand four hundred and sixty-eight participants. Again, um, survey was completed in English and Spanish by, by those students, um, and we had participants in all grade levels.
Can I ask a question on the participation?
Yep.
For the parents, it was parents of all students or just parents of students who did not take, you know, who weren't offered?
It was, it was offered to parents of all students, grades pre-K through twelve. So, I wanted to start with some real high-level results. So, part of the survey um, that comes out, um, they conduct what they call a favorability score. So, a favorability score is um, a score that they take an average of or a percentage of, of parents or any, any participant who rates the question in a favorable manner. So, they are either answering it strongly, agree, or agree. So, the graphs that you see here for the parent guardian and the BPS staff, you can see the favorability scores for each common measure. So, a common measure or theme is the overarching theme. And under that is approximately four to five individual questions that make the common measure of that theme. Um, so you can see for the parent guardians, um, the average favorability score was a seventy-two. We saw a seventy-four in institutional environment, um, which is the parent's perception of how the maintenance and the resources of their student's school is. We saw seventy-four in interpersonal relationships, which was the parent's perception of the degree to which their student is supported and treated fairly by adults and peers within the school. We saw sixty percent favorability scare, um, score in parent involvement, which is the parent perception of the degree of which they are involved in their student's education. We saw an eighty um, percent favorability score in school safety, which is parents' perception of their student's safety at school. And we saw seventy, seventy percent in regards to teaching and learning, which is the parent's perception of the degree to which they feel their student enjoys and is successful at school. Um, for BPS staff, these are the favorability scores. We had an average favorability score over all of the common measures of a sixty-one percent. Um, for parent involvement, we had a favorability score of, of thirty-seven. Um, and we're going to get into each of, each group a little bit further. But that was the staff's perception to the degree in which parents are involved in their student's education. Peer and adult relationships had a fifty-two percent favorability score, which is the staff's perception of how students interact with peers and adults in, in their school. Um, physical environment was a sixty-nine percent favorability score. So, staff's perception of the maintenance of school grounds and resources, school safety, fifty-nine percent. Their perception of their own safety at school, staff's own safety at school. Staff connections um, was a seventy-five, which is their perception to the degree in which they feel like they fit in and are a part of their school community. And structures for learning, which was a sixty-six percent favorability score, which was the um, staff perception of the degree of which they feel colleagues treat students fair, have high expectations, and set clear rules. For the elementary, there, there are no topics because the total survey is only eleven questions. So, there's no common measures or common themes. Um, we still get an average favorability score of seventy-two percent. But I wanted to include our top two questions, um, that students answered favorably to. So, our top question in our elementary that students answered favorably to was, there is an adult at my school who will help me if I need it. We have a ninety percent favorability score in that. And my school wants me to do well, which was an eighty-eight percent favorability score. Excuse me. The um, lower end of the spectrum in favorability scores for our elementary students were students treat each other well with a fifty-one percent. And students in my class behave so that teachers can teach with a forty-four percent. Moving to secondary, so this is the students' um, scores. We had an overall score of a sixty-five percent favorability. And then, as you can see, we can go down. Um, so a sixty-seven in adult um, social supports, which is the student's perception of the degree of which they feel they are engaged with and supported by adults in their school. Fifty-four percent for cultural acceptance, which is the student's perception of the degree to which diverse cultural backgrounds are welcome and celebrated by peers and adults in their school. Order and discipline was a fifty-nine percent, which is student's perception to the degree to which they feel their school has high expectations and sets clear rules for behavior. Seventy-six percent for peer social support, which was the student's perception to the degree which they feel they are engaged with and supported by peers in their school. Physical environment at fifty-nine, similar to the last one, perception of the maintenance of school grounds and resources. School connectedness was a fifty-four percent favorability score, which is a student's perception to the degree which they feel they fit in and are a part of their school. School safety, um, again, perceptions of their safety at school. And um, social and civic learning was an eighty-seven percent favorability score. And that is defined as the student's perception of their own and their peers' character and character development at school. I can absolutely get you those definitions as well. I know that was quick. Sorry, you're moving and I'm trying to follow along. Okay. Going a little bit more in-depth into the, each of the, the surveys, I wanted to do some glows and some grows for us. So, some, um, some glows or some highlights from the parent and guardian survey is we saw the top um, two rated um, common themes. The first one was under school safety. Um, you can note under that, that scores remained relatively consistent when looking at across different demographics, including grades, grade levels, um, race, programming, whether they were in IEP or AP honors classes. Two questions really came as clear strengths within that safety category. And those really revolved around physical safety in the buildings and feeling safe traveling to and from the buildings. Another area of growth or another common theme, um, uh, that, I'm sorry, was a, was a highlight or a glow for us from the parent guardian survey was the overall score in teaching and learning. Um, again, I, I put the definition up there. Um, the highest individual score from that subset was, teachers at my student's school work hard to make sure that students do well, which was an eighty-one percent favorability score. And scores remain relatively consistent across um, race demographics, but did vary based on grade or level. I wanted to also highlight some of the um, high individual scores by question. So, you can see them below, but um, we had high favorability scores in the questions of, teachers at my school keep their classrooms clean and organized. I feel comfortable talking to teachers at my student's school. I attend parent-teacher conferences at my student's school. I feel safe going to and from the school. And teachers at my student's school work hard to make sure that students do well. I also wanted to note that we had a, a rather significant increase in engagement from parents and guardians from, from the last year's survey. We had a fifteen point nine six overall participation rate. Um, I know that does seem low, but actually for surveys within the town, that's pretty good. I also wanted to note that we, with Parentsware, can now really see the number of parents who receive the communication. And we can also look into the number of parents who actually click open on the email. So, if you want to take into account the parents who actually opened the email to read about the school climate survey, we're actually at a twenty-two point two percent um, um, rate for people who viewed the email to know and participate in the school climate survey. And again, the, the parent guardian survey um, was completed in twelve different languages. Some areas for growth, um, parents and guardians rated the lowest overall score in parent involvement, which is interesting because one of the highest scores is in parent involvement, but the, the other um, questions within that actually brought that down to one of our lowest um, scores. So, the two questions that led to those results are, I'm actively, I'm actively involved in activities at my student's school was a fifty-eight percent. And I frequently volunteer to help on special projects at my student's school, which is a thirty, thirty-one percent. And those varied um, across grade level and by race, um, those scores. I also wanted to add in here that I looked at um, a question in regards to communication. And the communication satisfaction differed by demographic. So, although it was rated overall at a seventy-three, staff at my student's school communicate well with parents, results on that very much varied based on school and grade level. Um, so we're, you know, one of the wonderings is, is that kind of connected or, or involved with some of our parent involvement score, even though it's not under that subset of questions. Some of the lowest individual scores by questions um, from the parent guardian survey that came out is, my students' textbooks are up to date and in good condition at fifty-seven percent. I think we can maybe imagine why that question might be a little outdated from the PBIS survey, especially for Burlington. Um, all students are treated fairly at my student's school was a sixty-two percent favorability. I frequently volunteer, again, um, this was one of the questions in parent involvement on special projects at my student's school, that was thirty-one. And school rules and procedures at my student's school are fair was a sixty-nine percent. So, moving on to the staff results, um, so for highlights or glows, um, staff rated um, one of the highest overall common measures as staff connections, which is their perception to which they feel like they fit in and are a part of their school community. These scores remained relatively consistent across um, different demographics, including number of years of work or experience and race. There was some variability in score when we looked at it at, at grade or level taught. Um, one question that came out as a clear strength within that subset was, I get along with other staff members at my school. Another common measure that was rated high or was a glow for staff was the um, physical environments, the perception of the maintenance of school grounds and resources, kudos to Mr. Kuna. Um, scores remain relatively consistent across years of service and work, work experience. There was variability in scores when looking at grades and level taught and race. I think we can imagine some buildings may be scored higher than other buildings in this. Um, one question was a clear strength, which was, teachers at my school keep their classrooms clean and organized, which was a seventy-eight percent favorability. Um, some high individual scores by questions. And again, these come from different common measures, where I get along with other staff members at my school was a ninety percent. I feel safe when entering and leaving my building was eighty-eight percent. I enjoy working in teams, either their grade level or their content at their school, which was an eighty-one. I feel safe at my school, which was an eighty percent favorability. And I feel supported by other teachers at my school, which was a seventy-eight percent favorability. Again, we saw an increased participation rate from um, the staff as well this year compared, compared to the twenty-two, twenty-three school climate survey, um, with a seventy-six point six percent response rate. Um, and we had staff complete the survey from all levels, pre-K through twelve. Some um, staff grows or areas for us to investigate further. Um, our lowest overall score was in parent involvement, um, which was the perception to the degree which they think parents are involved in their student's education. These did significantly vary based on the grade level taught. Um, staff viewed all questions as, in this topic, as contributing to the low score. And I just wanted to note that, that clearly is, is not in congruence with how parents responded. So, that's a wondering for us to dive further into because they, they scored very high, they scored themselves very high in attending school conferences and PTO. in attending school conferences and PTO events, where staff had a different perception of that. So there's an incongruence there that we will need to investigate further and talk about. They also had the lowest overall score in peer and adult interactions, which is their perception of how students interact with peers and adults in their schools. Scores did significantly vary based on race and grade level demographics. And students rated concerns around behaviors and students being up standards regarding bullying as a concern. And I wanted to make sure that I gave the specific questions that came to that. So it was, "Students at my school would help another student who was being bullied." And "Students at my school demonstrate behaviors that allow teachers to teach and students to learn." So those were the kind of the two questions that really, that led to this being an area of needing growth. Some lower, lowest individual scores by question, where, again, you can see at this school, parents frequently volunteer to help on special projects. "Parents at my school attend PTA meetings or parent-teacher conferences." "Students at my school demonstrate behaviors that allow teachers to teach and students to learn." And "Students at my school would help another student who is being bullied." And if I report unsafe, dangerous behaviors, I can be sure the problem will be taken care of. Both scored in the forty-nine percent. So again, for the elementary, just a reminder, there's no common themes or measures because there's only eleven questions. So I did some highlights or some glows of the individual questions that came out from our fourth and fifth graders. So as you can see here, some highlights or high scores where there's an adult at my school will help me if I need it, which was a ninety. "My school wants me to do well," which was an eighty-eight percent. "My school has clear rules for behavior," which was an eighty-five percent. And "Teachers treat me with respect," which was an eighty-five percent. And all of those scores remained relatively consistent across varying demographics, including the schools attending, grades and race. We saw, again, an increased participation in this survey from the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school climate survey. We had students from all four elementary schools complete the survey, and we had a ninety-two point two percent response rate from fourth and fifth graders. Some areas for growth or grows within our grades four and five results. So the lowest individual scores by questions were, from the student's perspective, "Students in my class behave so that teachers can teach," was forty-four. "Students treat each other well" was fifty-one. "I like school" was fifty-four. And "Good behavior is noticed at my school" sixty-three. These scores varied by school attending, grade level and gender. I also wanted to note that students who self-identified as Black or African-American or Asian rated lower scores in all of the questions across all of our schools, with the exception of the questions below. For our Black and African-American students, they actually rated above the average for the question, "I feel like I do well in school," with an eighty-four percent. And the Black and African-American students also rated above the average for the question, "I get along with other students," at a seventy-eight percent. For students who self-identified as Asian, they rated higher in the "I like school" with sixty-eight percent. And also rated higher in "My school has clear rules for behavior" at the eighty-six percent. I wanted to note this because it was notable in the results, but I also wanted to note that the standard deviation from the mean or the average was very low. So there wasn't a huge discrepancy, but it was clear that this was an area that we should investigate and grow further in. Some secondary glows. So our sixth through twelfth grade students rated the highest overall score in social and civic learning, which was their own perception of their character and character development in school. Scores remain relatively consistent across demographics, including the school attending, their grade, their race and their gender. Two of the questions in this topic are also noted below in the highest individual score rating, so I'll get to that. Another area of growth or, I'm sorry, of glow or highlight for grade six through twelve was the overall score in peer social support. So their perception of the degree of which they feel they are engaged and supported by peers in their school. These scores did vary based on demographics, so their school attending, their grade, their race and their gender. However, one question was a clear strength in this topic, and that question was, "I know a student at my school that I can talk to if I need help." For example, for homework, class assignments or projects. High individual scores by questions for grades six through twelve included, "I treat other students fairly," with a ninety-one percent. "I believe in helping others," with a ninety percent. "Doing the right thing is important to me," with an eighty-eight percent. "I know a student at my school that I can talk to if I need help," was eighty-six. And "Honesty is an important trait to me" at eighty-five. We, again, saw an increase in student survey participation from the previous school climate survey. We had about an eighty point one two percent response rate for our grades six through twelve students. And we saw participation from all levels. Some areas for growth or grows within our secondary, grade six through twelve, where they rated the lowest overall score in school connectedness, which is their perception to the degree which they feel like they fit in and are part of their school. These scores varied based on demographics. So they varied based on grade level, race, gender, gender identity. And one question was significantly lower, which was, "Most days I look forward to going to school." Another area of overall rated low or overall need for growth was cultural acceptance. The student's perception of the degree in which diverse cultural backgrounds are welcomed and celebrated by peers and adults in their schools. These scores varied based on demographics. So they varied across grade level, race, gender and gender identity. Some of the lower individual scores by questions included, "Most days I look forward to going to school" with a thirty percent. "Students in my school take pride in keeping our building." For example, "The bathrooms, classrooms, lockers in good condition" was a thirty-one. "I like school" was a forty-one percent. And "Students are frequently recognized for good behavior" was a forty-six percent. So just a kind of an overarching comparative data or comparison from twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three. For our parents and guardians, our areas of strength remained consistent between our survey years. We had similar areas for growth noted in both years, which was really the parental involvement. For our BPS staff, we had consistency in the areas of strength in regards to staff connectedness between survey years. Similar areas for growth with the peer and adult relationships and parental involvement. However, we noted an improvement in the school safety theme or common measure. In elementary, we saw consistency in identified areas of strength and areas of need for growth between the survey years. And for our secondary students, we saw consistency in identified areas of strength between survey years. We saw similar areas for growth, however, oh, there's a typo there. We already noted improvement in the area of school safety, again. Just wanted to talk about some connections to the current district initiatives that are already well underway and going on. So as you've heard a lot this year, we have a strong focus on social-emotional learning and creating a sense of belonging. So the district, for our pre-K through eight grades, has adopted an explicit social-emotional learning curriculum, Wayfinder, and dedicated a block or a time per week for including that in our curriculum. Part of the Wayfinder curriculum for all grades is truly working on building a sense of belonging for all students across the district. We also heard tonight already that we have a district safety committee that is underway, working with Burlington Police Department, Burlington Fire Department, to enhance our safety protocols. We've already seen some growth in our school climate data there. I also wanted to note that Dr. Conti and Dr. Chen have been working to ensure that all of the district admin are also receiving training and reviewing policies related to student behavior so that there's consistency and understanding across the district. We've had many internal professional developments on that already this year. In regards to communication and community, as you know, we are implementing a standardized communication platform, Parent Square, with the hope that this will ensure consistent, timely, translated and equitable communication to all parents and guardians. In addition, we're also working to provide more opportunities for community building, such as our Parent Guardian Nights, the math night that you just heard about, our SEL Night, our literacy night are some of the examples. So for next steps, this data is very fresh. It's very new. Mr. Sullivan can attest that we are really just starting to look at this. So school administrators are going to be reviewing the data themselves, looking at it from their school's perspective. We will be working as an admin team to come back together and really discuss the data collectively. I just wanted to talk, again, under kind of those common themes, we're going to continue to enhance our social-emotional learning program. Part of Wayfinder is an explicit anti-bullying curriculum. So we are ensuring that that is happening for our pre-K through eight students. And for our high school students, we have already included that in our advisory period. So we have already done some anti-bullying curriculum this year for our nine through twelve students. For safety, we're going to continue to work with our district safety committee to work on the physical safety. And again, we're working with Dr. Chen and Dr. Conti on more of the behavioral policies or behavioral interventions for students that are more individualized. And for communication and community, we're continuing to work with Parents Square. The Wellness Committee is being reestablished. So we'll be working with a group of stakeholders, including parents and guardians, to talk about some of these results and how to bridge some areas. And continuing to enhance our parent guardian involvement, including curriculum nights and other opportunities for community building as well. And I'm happy to try to answer any possible question.
Well, I want to thank you. I mean, that was quite extensive. And I appreciate it, and I know we're going to be able to get these slides so we can look at it more carefully. But just to start, thank you for that presentation. I can't believe you got all those words out. So are there comments, Dr. Conti or, okay, Ms. Monaco?
Just thank you. Nice job.
Thank you.
Ms. Bond?
Thank you. Nice job as well. But will we be able to see a breakdown, though, by school? Like Fox Hill or Panglan? I mean, I don't know if we've ever asked for that before, but it might be interesting to just kind of see in more detail. If you're able to, I don't want to put more work on it.
I'm going to defer to the boss.
Yeah, again, I think I want to give administrators a chance to see the data first, talk to their staff. This really isn't meant to be, it's meant to be a reflective exercise, not necessarily. It's, again, there's a lot of grows, but we also have areas we need to work on. So it's not top secret stuff. I think we'll make sort of some district-wide information available. But I want to spend some more time with the data before we start looking at it at that level.
Ms. Masardo?
I just have a comment on the parental involvement. I think it's disappointing. I mean, I'm a parent too. It's hard. I think we all need to think outside the box of like what kind of parental involvement parents want to have and what kind of opportunities for parental involvement there are. Because I think maybe sometimes they're not aligned. But I look forward to helping in any way, again, to move that needle because I think it's important.
Thank you.
Dr. Conti?
No, again, Madam, through the chair, Ms. Masardo, I also think, as, again, our climate survey isn't going away. This is our second one. We're going to do another one next December. And what I'm hoping is as the community, as staff, as students, as parents see us responding to the feedback that we're receiving, that they'll be more incentivized to participate. And so hopefully, that'll happen. I do think the Parent Square, just that the survey was answered in so many languages, was, I think, was a positive for us. The involvement question is, are parents defining involvement differently than staff? So I do think we need to spend some time on that and so to make sure we have some common understanding. So again, my point is, participation in the survey itself, I think, will continue to improve. And I also then think as we participate more in these surveys, get more comfortable with what we're asking, then I'm hoping that we'll see, you know, more alignment. But what I also hope the committee saw is a much more granular look at some critical aspects of what we're looking at. I think we're going to look at growth over time. None of this is a light switch. We don't sort of say, "We're going to change this policy," and automatically see it. And I also think that Chrissy and I spent a lot of time, especially Chrissy, looking at the power of the Thought Exchange tool, given the survey. So you sort of have two choices in this area. You can pay for survey questions. And then typically, if you pay for survey questions, some sort of analysis comes with it. Or you get the survey questions for free. Again, they're all research-based, but then you have to pay for the analysis afterwards. So the PBIS questions were, again, a very well-resourced source for us to look at school climate. So we decided to stick with those questions. And this was really a powerful tool to do some analysis. There's also an artificial intelligence piece to Thought Exchange, so you can ask the software some questions. What are the, you know, across different demographics? So, again, I think we're just getting, we're not even scratching the surface yet of some of the ability of this tool moving forward. So been impressed with, I was more impressed with the Thought Exchange in this exercise than I was with the Fox Hill, with sort of how we used it for the Fox Hill. Not saying that was done poorly, but I'm saying the power of looking at this over a sort of multiple levels, I've just been, I think it was, is worth our while.
And I just wanted to add it, and I didn't put it in my presentation, but some of the feedback that we got from last year or that I received last year from parents and guardians was a desire to be able to give more detail to their responses than a Likert scale. So I don't know if you had the opportunity to take the school climate survey, but if parents answered in, I don't want to say negative manner, but if they answered that they disagreed or strongly disagreed to any question in a common measure, they were then, before moving on to the next subset of questions, given an opportunity to write in responses, which then we are able to access, you know, the individual responses, but also kind of if there are general themes within those responses. So always a continuous improvement measure. You know, love to hear from parents and guardians about how that felt and how it went. And, you know, working to make sure we continuously improve access to this for parents is huge.
Ms. Masardo?
Thanks. Are there benchmarks to these ratings? Like from PBIS? Or like the average elementary school? Like, and I'm sure there's demographic matches, et cetera. Do we have benchmarks or not?
It's a really hard survey to benchmark, just because every context is so different. Again, I think if someone said, "Boy, a seventy-two percent average, you know, positive is great." I'm not sure we could say that accurately. I think what we're looking at is, again, year-to-year growth. I certainly would want to see predominance of like a positive. But the Thought Exchange folks or the PBS folks, I'm not sure that they have a breakdown that we're in the top five percent of suburban. I haven't seen that. If that's what you're asking, sort of a scale?
I mean, I'm not asking, are we the top of anything? But I think it helps you focus your efforts if you can see where you're above or below a benchmark. If you're, like, if you feel like seventy-five might be poor, but that's already above the benchmark, then you wouldn't have an expectation of moving a needle too hard there. But you might want to focus where you're far off from a benchmark.
Yeah. I haven't seen benchmarks, but we can certainly ask other districts.
If you don't have it, it's okay. I was just asking.
I mean, we can absolutely ask other districts. I know there are other districts in Massachusetts who utilize the PBIS. I would venture a guess that we might be one of the only districts who utilized it on Thought Exchange. Because I think we're rather unique in having that tool. But what I can share is, when last year we used the PBIS software to review results, what they did is they give you a score of, if it's under, I think it was under a three, then that's an area of need for growth. Those scores were consistent with areas of growth through Thought Exchange and percentage that we saw. But in comparative data to different districts, we haven't been able to kind of know, in Massachusetts schools, you know, seventy-five percent is a really wonderful score for, you know, school connectedness. I think my hope and goal would be, over the next five years, if we continue, we'll be able to see incremental growth. And I think that we've seen some growth already in school safety scores. And I, I think that, that we've seen some growth already in school safety scores, really attributes to some of the work that we've already started to, to implement this year and last year. So my hope is that we'll start seeing other growth in areas that we've really put a lot of work in, into supporting.
I'd like to comment on the benchmark issue because I think that could be valuable to know what benchmarks we're trying to look at and which areas are weaker. And I also want to keep in mind that if we have a 75% and it's above the benchmark, that means that there's a 25% of students and families that we still want to be reaching and want to be improving those students' experience at school. And so I, I don't want to discard the idea of benchmarks, but I also know that growth in any of these areas, I think, is a, well, I'd have to look at all the questions. But growth in these areas of concern is a good thing and we want to work to, for 100%. We, you know, that's our, you know, for all, every child. So, thank you for all of that. Are there other questions about, yes, Ms. Bond?
No, actually, just, it always surprises me when, you know, the number is 22% clicked on it. I don't, I, you know, I'm trying to figure out, and I'm sure you are too, how to get more participation, right? Because I think, you know, parents have opinions and are very vocal in communicating that in a different way. And, you know, maybe there's some, I'm not sure what the answer is and how to get them to participate more, but it's disappointing that more parents don't participate and aren't heard. And I'm not sure how to get word out, you know, before it goes out to tell everybody. Just, it'd be better to say, hey, 70% of parents participated. I'd love to hear that.
And I, I hope that the more that we talk about it and the more we discuss it, that maybe that will garner more participation. We saw higher levels of participation. It is a fine line of how much you nudge through parent square. So, you know, I did send the, the email on December 4th. I sent out, you know, my friendly reminder on the 18th. And, you know, you try to get, get some more responses. But I think, you know, trying to get a higher response rate from parents and guardians would, would be also another success for next year.
Is it possible to maybe change the timing of the year that we do it? Because December is a very busy month for people. I, I mean, you know what I'm saying. There's just a lot going on.
And again, Madam Chair, we did talk about the timing of that. There are other assessments, other surveys that we do, the youth risk behavior survey, other things. So trying not to provide survey overload. I think that limits participation. I think really what we wanted this year is to make sure we were consistent. So December may not be perfect, but if we stick to December and it becomes predictable, then the comparisons are, are better. If you're going to tell me May is the perfect month, then there'll be other issues in May that we have to do with the advanced placement exams and sort of everything else. So we'll certainly be open to if people think there's a better time. Our sort of conversation was to stick, at some point, we're going to need to establish the time and sort of stick with it so that the, the year-to-year comparisons are as, as, you know, as, as good as we can make them. And I think if, with any survey, if people feel like you're paying attention to it again and they're actually talking about it, and again, we review this with staff and parents and, you know, let the kids see that their voices matter, I, I think that'll help drive participation as well. So again, the intention here is to continue doing school climate surveys. I hope you find sort of the information also something that you find valuable and you see a connection between sort of what we're doing, some of your policies, some of the budgeting that we're doing, the needs we have. And this, this is one outcome that I think can help shape some of those conversations.
Yes, Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess just one question and it's kind of a stretch is, can we use this data to inform the district improvement plan? So again, parents respond to this, they see that we're talking about it, and then in some way take this to, you know, use this focus areas in the district improvement plan. That way it becomes, you know, a continuous improvement process and, you know, completes the cycle. I don't know if it really fits, but maybe something to look at.
Again, I think that's the intention. So the intention is you should see some alignment between what we're focusing on and, and the questions that we're asking, and I think it does exist. And initially, the school improvement plan was to create a school climate survey and to ask these questions. So then ultimately, we should see, we should see an alignment, Mr. Brooks, of those things. It's never perfect because schools aren't perfect. But again, for large efforts like social emotional learning, like how our kids treat each other, you know, different aspects of that, that we are focusing on as a district, you should see then our efforts align with that. So yes.
Other comments or questions? Thank you again for all the hard work and for the great presentation. And we look forward to getting the slide deck, and I assume that will go up on the website as well. Yep, okay. So other people can look into the questions. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, may I suggest since we have Mr. Alabato and Mr. Sullivan here, could we get to the stipends and tuitions after we do the program of studies? Would that be acceptable?
That sounds like a great idea. Come on up.
You don't want to make them wait any longer?
I do, I do.
We know they wanted to hear that representation.
But I do.
Yep. Do you want two microphones or use one? Good. All right.
I definitely feel underdressed after seeing Robbie.
Oh, yeah. He's, he's quite something.
And again, this is a first reading of the high school program of studies. And so not asking for a vote this evening, but certainly we'll be open to any questions or comments you have between now and the, and the second meeting. So.
Great, yeah. Thanks for having us. You have the program of studies memo linked at the very top. You can link to the full program of studies. Cover this year done by Anthony Magnarelli, class of 24. As always, we have a student design the cover for the, for the program. So Anthony was selected for this year's cover. So thank you to him for doing that. As typical, we're just going to go through some new courses we're proposing, courses that we're modifying, some courses that were taken out of the program, and just some adjustments to some different programmatic things that we're proposing for next year. And I appreciate Joe being here with me again tonight. And obviously, any questions that you have, we're happy to, to answer anything that, that you might have. So we'll get right into it. New courses that we're proposing. And these typically, this first one anyhow, we have a new band teacher, band director here at the high school. So oftentimes, in elective types of courses, when new educators come in, they want to put their own flavor and twist on the different courses and programs. They get student feedback as they spend time here, you know, working with kids here at the high school. So the music technology, production, and film scoring is something that Mystic Editor is passionate in and really has an interest in, so wants to offer the course to Broughton High School students. And I won't read the whole description for you. You have it in front of you. The biology foundations course, this is for specifically for EL students at a foundational WETA level and/or a recommendation from the EL content teacher and their counselor. Again, this is a course adapting to the changing needs of EL students. The foundation you may typically see in the past for special education students, but we're adapting some of these foundation-level courses for our ESL students as well. And the next one, and I know Robbie mentioned it earlier, about the Pathway. He appreciates your support, as do we at the high school. We do, we did receive that, that particular grant, so we are a Pathway for computer science and business now. And we'll talk about that a little bit later as a modification. But the business department is offering a new course to align with their Pathway development, business marketing, digital technology, and introductory Pathway course. So it qualifies as a business and a finance Pathway course and a computer science introductory Pathway. So it would fill both those requirements in, in that particular class. Some courses that are coming out, and we do delete courses if we notice really low enrollment, lack of interest, if the teachers or if the educators aren't really interested in teaching them anymore. And for example, the creative business tech is coming out to make room for the new business class. The musical theater is coming out to make room for the new music class. And then Science and Society, which hasn't run for a couple of years, they really, it never got off the ground. So we're proposing to take that out as well. Joe's going to go over some modifications?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Again, thank you for having us tonight. So I'm going to go over courses that have been modified or changed. I just want to make sure I recognize the department heads and the teachers. A lot of effort and time goes into the descriptions. You know, we, we assume that students read them. I'm not sure it necessarily happens all the time. But we really try to push the program of studies out to make sure students read them. So again, I just wanted to make sure I recognize the department heads and teachers that, that updated all these courses. So the, the new courses, really the first 10 of EL were foundational courses. That have all, again, they've been updated. They're existing courses within our program of studies that have been updated. And I think it's trying to go through what Mr. Sullivan said about the new biology course. Just with the changing dynamic of our student needs, we've adjusted some of these courses to align with student need. And so EL population, our students, they have learning disabilities, that type of thing. Some of these courses really try to individualize learning for students. And again, they're, they're the current courses that are running. The other course that, courses that I wanted to mention, we have, and I know many of the school committee members have heard of our tutoring program. So we really have had a tutoring program in existence for Arlington for, for a long time. And it's changed over the years. And so we made a, a change this year that seems to be very, very beneficial to students with new, so we have new school adjustment counselors at the high school. Again, thanks to the support from the school committee. But one of our school adjustment counselors is really starting to take a leadership role in our tutoring program. Because we found that the students that qualify for tutoring program, could be regular ed kids, could be, you know, special ed students in some cases, really need to work specifically on executive functioning and organizational skills. So our school adjustment counselor is now housed with the tutors. And she is actually making sure and running all the students in our tutoring program through executive functioning activities. And so this is really to help these students, you know, function, be themselves organized in school. So given that, you know, for lack of a better word, we're beefing up our tutoring program. And the school adjustment counselor has really been a strong advocate for working with students within this program. And we wanted to, and this would be for students that participate in tutoring for a full period. We do have students that drop in as well, but for a student in there for a full period, we're going to, we would like to just grant them credit for that. They are participating, they're attending, and now with the executive functioning module, we think that, you know, that is something that is worth credit.
Yeah, I would just say we do offer credit for academic support. So for students that are scheduled into academic support as a special education service, we do offer credit to those students that participate in it. So I think we would liken the kids who got credit for the tutoring program similar to the academic support that's already in existence.
And the benefits credit is what's happening is. Some of these students are coming out of classes, a full-year class. And so in years past and presently, they, they lose credit. So it, it could potentially impact if the student isn't successful with their, their grades. But this at least recognizes the student that's attending every day. So again, that would be our academic achievement center. The next class, child development, again, a longstanding program at Broughton High School. It's a very popular elective for juniors and seniors. It's, it's changed. Our lead teacher has changed. It's now.
It's Ms. Shalcoski.
Sorry. So Krista Shalcoski is now the child development teacher this year. She's doing an awesome job. She's taking a close look at the course descriptions and she's revamped them. So don't let, keep forgetting her name, having anything to do with her in the class. She's been doing great this year. And again, it's a very, very popular elective that we're excited to keep, keep in the, in the program of studies. And next classes, so it's an honors Italian class. We've historically always offered Italian. It's always been at the CP level. And I think now at the high school, the chair of the world language department wants to try to entice students to participate in, in Italian. And so offering an honors option may allow some students to sign up for the course. So we still have a CP option, but this would be an honors Italian one option. And I was just going to quickly mention, this actually isn't in the, in the memo, but I wanted to quickly mention this because this is more of a recent activity. But we talk a lot about dual enrollment. And so for the newer members this year, I do a enrollment program at the high school. We've been running it since, since Dr. Conti came in 2008.
Eight.
So what, what had happened in Virginia previously is there were students that attended school there, that would graduate high school with an associate's degree. They would take their existing high school courses and get college credit. And so that model was, was new at the time of 2008. I would probably say we were one of the first high schools to do that in the area. And so essentially, our existing high school teachers are teaching classes. You probably already know about the program. So again, we try to improve and increase our enrollment. And so our AP calculus class currently does not do enrollment, but we're looking to make that a dual enrollment course. Right now, our honors calculus is doing enrollment, so it just makes sense to add our AP calculus course as well. So that's on the program of studies. There is an approval process that the teacher has to go through, and we're going through that process now. So we hope to increase the opportunity for students, if they choose to, it's a choice, to enroll in dual enrollment. And I'm going to pass it over to Mr. Sullivan.
Great, thanks, Joe. So I know that Robbie mentioned the Pathways program, but I just wanted to, I know Ms. Tyrell was here a couple of weeks ago, and she discussed the, the Pathways, and she did a much better job than, than I will right now. But just as a reminder, the Pathway program aims to prepare students for college and careers by giving them experience in different industries through college-level coursework, internships, and partnerships with local professionals and businesses. Students have the opportunity to join these pathways now in business or computer science, and they're open to all students. They need to engage in coursework and practical experiences related to their career goals. So if students sign up for the Pathways, they take two business or computer science courses at the high school in addition to two exploratory, exploratory courses. And then they also have to complete an internship or a 100-hour capstone project. And I know Ms. Tyrell talked about some of the different experiences in relationships that she has built with local, local partners in this, in this area. And she has done a terrific job. And I know Krista and Danielle will do an equally terrific job building the business pathways. You heard Robbie, DECA is a very, very popular activity right now. I was, had the opportunity to judge at the competition a couple of weeks ago, and I, I don't think Robbie did it justice. The kids really are presented with somewhat complicated scenarios and have 15 minutes to put together. They don't know what they are in advance and present to you kind of how they would strategize or problem-solve different scenarios related to their field. So the kids just do a really terrific job. So I have no doubt that the business pathways will, will, will take off quickly with the, the students that are in that program. So I just wanted to, to mention that, that that is in the program now, and we're excited to get that off the ground and running. I just wanted to mention there is one request to change. We do offer an opt-out in the math department. In the past, the, a student who wanted to skip a course and, and take an opt-out exam would have to notify Ms. Wickholm by April 1st and then sit for that test sometime in April. We want to keep that notice of intent to April 1st, but allow the students to test over the summer. Feedback that we have gotten from the kids is that taking a difficult examination like that, in addition to their current coursework, was challenging and not necessarily allowing them to, you know, complete a full year of math or, you know, obviously, some kids are participating in enrichment activities. So we will administer the test. We are requesting to administer it in August instead of April. But the process is otherwise exactly the same. And then we did put a statement, and I know Dr. Chen has been a terrific leader in evaluating the mathematics curriculum K to 12. And she's brought together a terrific group of administrators and teachers who are currently going through that process. And I've heard her talk about that with, with the committee over the last few meetings, so I won't go into a lot of specifics with that. with that. But some of the conversation has been about students transitioning from middle school to high school and what they're selecting. So, they have a couple of options. They can choose to take algebra, which was probably more of a traditional pathway coming out of the middle school, honors or CP, honors or college prep. We had 60, 60 students this year who elected to skip Algebra I entirely and go right into honors geometry. And for a lot of kids, that's the right decision. For some students, they struggle. We have some students who take honors algebra and find it's too challenging and want to drop down to CP. It's never a perfect system, but we want families and students, when they transition, to be as educated as possible and use their teacher recommendation and various assessments that we are planning to administer starting this year, and use them as very strong recommendations as to which course and which level to take. So, we're still working on some logistics, and we're going to communicate with eighth-grade families about the different processes. Again, these are not binding this year, so families still have the choice to take what they want. But in sometime in April, there will be an algebra assessment that will help students determine which level to take, honors or CP, in addition to the teacher recommendation. And then, it potentially might ping some students that maybe weren't thinking about it, but could be ready for the challenge to actually skip it and take geometry. So, it could work both ways. And then, for the students who are interested in or asking to skip algebra, excuse me, Algebra I, we're going to administer another assessment in March. That would be another data point that they could use to see if they're ready to actually skip it. And so, again, Katie Whitcomb, Michael Freiman, Carrie Purchase, Carrie Fortunato, Dr. Chen, and myself, we are discussing what those assessments are gonna look like. And again, they're not binding. So, they're just data points for students and families to consider when making those decisions, when transitioning from middle, from Marshall Simons to VHS.
I just wanna clarify one point, and I really appreciate it, Principal Sullivan. The first one, I think you just reversed it. The first one will be the Algebra I diagnostic.
Correct.
That will be earlier. That will be the one in March.
March, yes, yes.
I think you reversed it.
I did, yes, I'm sorry.
And, no, no, I just want to make that clear. And then, the one that is for those folks that want to skip Algebra I completely, because, you know, Algebra I is your gateway to calculus, right? We're going to be administering another assessment, and that assessment will be based on the cumulative knowledge of Algebra I, if you were going to skip Algebra I. And that one's gonna be more so in April, May.
Correct, correct. And then, just the last thing, is a pilot proposal in the ELA department this year. And it is to eliminate the college prep level for senior English and to have all students choose from AP and honors. So, when students are selecting their final English Language Arts course at VHS, they'll have completed all of their other requirements. Foundation level courses will stay the same, so that will still be offered for students who require those modifications, or if it's an EL type of course. And the rationale is, over the years, we've noted patterns in scheduling that really can negatively alter classroom dynamics, impact student motivations, affect student growth. It also leans into our equity statement when we talk about challenging students to take higher-level courses. So, this is a way to begin to pilot that process, about encouraging all kids to take the highest level of courses that they can. We've had a lot of students that have been choosing to take AP English, which then affects the other classes across the different levels. Teachers are noting a rising need to ensure all students have the opportunity to engage in demanding academic challenges and activities. There's an increased imbalance of the makeup of the classes in our senior English courses, ranging from gender disproportion, class-size disparity, and they can contribute to inequitable access to learning for different kids. With seniors being opened up to having more course offerings in different electives and advanced programs, to seniors, scheduling can become challenging. So, we have, with three different levels, we often have very small class sizes. So, this would allow us to have, you know, spread out different teachers, to have more equitable class sizes across different courses. The senior English curriculum is already aligned across our CP and honors. So, what that means is that they're reading the same text, they explore the same essential questions, they all engage in similar learning activities. The current differences between the two is pacing in the level of work students are expected to complete independently, which really applies to most honors and CP courses at the high school. But as the senior English teachers support students to meet the expectations that are outlined in our Portrait of the Graduate, they are excited to create more authentic learning environments to better prepare all students. So, again, another strength of this is, especially as seniors in high school, for students to learn alongside all of their peers with different strengths and needs can support personal, professional, and academic growth while promoting responsible students at the high school. One consideration that I just want to note is student support. So, if you're saying the kids who are college prep and they're being put into honors, we did make sure that in partnership with the special education department, we want to explore a model of inclusion that allows a special education teacher to work with these students across their English classes, rather than remain in one inclusion class. So, we would have special ed support across a variety of senior English courses. And with the increase in our flex blocks, students will have ample opportunities to meet with teachers for support around concepts and different assignments. And hopefully, this shift will encourage seniors to make effective use of that time, take more ownership of their own learning, and increase independence and responsibility. So, I know there's been a lot of talk across high schools in general about de-leveling. We're not looking at de-leveling the whole entire school. We're looking to start with a very small section of the senior class, just to see how it goes. I know the senior English teachers and the English teachers in general are very excited to pilot this and see how it goes, and to really demonstrate that we can challenge all kids across all levels to take the highest courses that we offer here at the high school. So, that is, that is it for the changes and modifications to the program, and thank you for your time.
So, this is a first reading, but I want people to have a question, an opportunity to make comments or questions, that we can get information if we need it before the second reading. Does anyone have anything they want to ask now, Ms. Masardo?
I just have a question in this ELA pilot. So, we are supporting CP in nine, 10, and 11, and there's enough students to fill out full classes. But you're saying by the time they get to senior year, that there is an equitable distribution? So, are they changing levels?
So, I think what they're finding is a lot of students are going into the AP, senior AP versus honors or CP. So, there's a lot of CP and AP and honors anyhow. So, the CP classes are becoming really, really small-
Okay.
-at the senior level. And so, that creates a challenge in itself when it's eight, nine, 10 kids.
Okay.
So, by redistributing all those kids into honors and AP, we could free up some sections to actually make the classes nine, 10, and 11, because the CP is higher there, smaller, and more accessible for those students as well.
Did you want to add to that, Mr. Abada?
I do. I was just gonna, I was just gonna say, just to piggyback on what Mr. Sullivan said. So, it's essentially where we're gonna be distributing the students a little bit more evenly. So, say we have five sections of CP and five sections of honors and five sections of AP. So, now we'll have, you know, 10 sections of honors and five sections of AP. So, now, those students can be a little bit more evenly distributed. And it might actually, you know, an offshoot of this, too, might be that a senior is more likely to potentially get into a different elective class because the schedule won't be as constrictive.
Yes. Other comments? Yes, Ms. Monica?
As you know, this is one of my favorite things, based on a whole lot of experience going pretty far back. I think that the, the English language, English learners programs that you're, they're putting in, I applaud you for that. I think that's great. I think we definitely need it, and I am totally with you on that. As far as the algebra goes, I believe that things have changed, you know, as if you go back a long time ago and to what's going on now. What I'm seeing is that students, especially without BEAM, okay? BEAM's gone. And without those special programs for the kids that advance easily and readily, it is absolutely necessary, what Lisa's doing, which is trying to put, I believe it's what you're doing, is to try to put a, a strong algebra program at the eighth grade. And I know it isn't simple. It means doing curriculum work all the way along. But I think that eighth graders really need the opportunity to have algebra at that point in time. And, you know, years ago, every now and then, you'd hear of a student going to Russian math. They're all going to Russian math now. And, well, maybe not all, but a lot. And the students are learning. And if we don't have our curriculum up to date and moving forward quickly, they're sitting in class doing things they already learned in Winchester on Sunday afternoon. So, I, I think the algebra thing is really, really important to get it strengthened at the middle school level. And then, on the, my last point is on the opt-out exam. I have no problem with the timing of it, but what I do have a problem with, and you've heard me say it before, and I'll say it until it changes, the opt-out exam needs to be fair. It needs to be maybe the final that the kids took, or it needs to be standardized. They exist, they use them at all the junior colleges, they use them at middlesex. When you, when you have a randomly made up test that you make difficult because, you know, somebody's trying to opt out of a course, I think it just isn't, it isn't the right way to do it. I think those tests need to be fair. It bothers me that they're not standardized, or maybe the final that the other kids took. But, you know, again, going back to the Russian math and what all these kids are emphasizing, these strong academic kids, they learn this stuff and they want to move ahead. And to have a test that maybe prevents them from moving ahead, you know how I feel about it. I'm just repeating it because I would like to see that test standardized.
May I, may I comment?
Yeah.
Just to answer that question. Our goal eventually, as we're going through this, this curriculum review, because curriculum reviews aren't done overnight. And Mr. Sullivan has had the opportunity to sit in on a couple of them with Dr. Thunder. We're starting to really take a look at the data. But one of the things that, as a vertical team, that we agreed on is that, just what you said, okay? So, the diagnostic test that we're looking to, to put in is one that, we're looking at several, but it's, it's probably gonna be leaning towards the, an I-Ready, because they use I-Ready anyhow at the middle school. So, it's comparing apples to apples, and that would be a diagnostic test. Now, for those kids who are going to be, that's just to see if they're gonna be ready for Algebra I, okay? So, those are the, to see, it's another data point.
Lisa, excuse me. The opt-out test I'm talking about?
Oh, no, no, I was gonna, I was gonna get to that.
Okay, you know what that is.
Yes, because there's two, there's two data points that we're measuring, right? There's one to make sure that the kids are placed correctly, whether it be in CP algebra or Algebra I, right? And so, that one is going to be using a test, which is like an Algebra I diagnostic test with I-Ready, because they use I-Ready anyhow at the middle school, okay? So, you really can compare apples to apples, okay? The other one that if, if that shows, like, the kids still, right, and they do very well, so that's an extra data point. So, it's not only the teacher recommendation, it's also the grades. Now, you have this Algebra I diagnostic test by I-Ready. The test that will be given for those kids who think, who are going to say, okay, I want to skip Algebra I completely, okay? It's going to be the final exam that the kids would normally take, that have all the standards of what Algebra I standards need to be. It's gonna be the final exam, the Algebra I's, it's gonna be cumulative, cumulative is what it's going to be. And it's gonna have all the Algebra I standards, and then they're gonna take a look and see how the kids also did on that as well, too. But there's still going to be, even though there's all these data points, in the end, the parents can still make the decision. But what we want to do is, we want to give not only the math teachers, but we also want to give the parents all these other data points so that, in the end, that they can make the best decision that's possible. It's not gonna preclude anyone.
I completely understand that. My assumption was that as you go through the math curriculum changes, that algebra will be taught to eighth graders somehow, some way, whether it's a stepped-up class. That was what I expected to happen from the curriculum change.
Yeah, but, but that is, that is something we are working towards.
Yes.
But we cannot put that in. It's too much of a switch right now-
Yes.
...because we're still looking at the course pathways.
It will take time.
It will take time.
It will take time.
But to clarify that point, that is something that we are definitely looking into.
Good.
So, that has not been off the table, that has not been thrown. But right now, our immediate concern is what, what has been raised at the math department, since we're all talking now, is that we just want to make sure that kids, based on the curriculum that they have now, are placed in the best places possible.
Absolutely.
Because what we're doing is, we're also taking a look at the data on the back end. And what we're finding out is that there are certain kids who are opting out of, who went into geometry, but when we're looking at their scores, they're not doing as well in geometry. And then, what's happened is that they're caught, they're caught taking that, they don't have another place to go in their schedule, okay?
Right.
And we don't want, we don't want that in the future for kids. And then, there are also some kids who are now in Algebra I, we've seen this, that are now dropped down to CP. They decided to go into honors, right? They're not doing as well, and then they're going into CP. So, we're really taking a look at each of these individual students. And so, in the end, what we can fix right now, because that is a longer curriculum review to put in Algebra I, because it's gonna impact what they also do at the elementary school. And to do that at the last, not, I don't say it's the last minute, it would take one or two years to really put that in place, because it's gonna stretch the gamut. It's gonna impact not only what happens in elementary school, but then in middle school, and then, and then in high school. Our immediate goal right now is to make sure that our children who are placed going to the high school, the parents have the best data possible, so that when they make the decision, teacher recommendation, grade, and also these tests. These tests that they've been used to taking, and there are no surprises.
Yes. What I, what I, to be specific, on the opt-out test, I'm referring to a strong student who would take Algebra II and be maybe outside learning more than that, who wants to opt out of pre-calculus. And the test that is given to that student in order to skip over pre-calculus and go straight into calculus, that's the test I'm referring to. And that test is what needs to be fair and needs to be standardized, and not just made a really hard test by a teacher or a group of teachers in which a lot of the kids who really could take the course and do well fail the test, and then they can't do it.
That, that feedback is heard, and I know it's adjusted, and it is aligned and standardized to our curriculum. So, I know sometimes there's frustration when it's the Russian School of Math or elsewhere, kids might be getting enrichment. It doesn't look exactly the same or didn't line up with where they got the enrichment for the opt-out. But it is aligned with our standards and the curriculum that we offer. But the feedback is heard. I know it has been adjusted over the years, and I will bring that feedback again. So, I hear you on that.
Thank you.
And I just, it's not in the program this year, but I just do want to note that as we go through these changes, Mrs. Whitcomb and the math teachers are looking at a way in which students can progress through our curriculum and still get to calculus without skipping Algebra I- through our curriculum and still get to calculus without skipping Algebra I at the high school. So what we want is for students who want to challenge themselves to be able to do that. But we also want students who maybe aren't prepared for that right away out of the middle school, but still have a four-year pathway to get to those calculus options. It's not something we were prepared to offer this year, but it is something she's strongly looking at. And hopefully next year, we'll have that pathway so kids can take algebra at Burlington High School, but still progress to some of the highest courses that we offer.
And what Mark Sullivan is saying is absolutely correct. And we weren't really prepared so much to talk about it in great detail tonight, but we wanted to answer your question. And just to let you know that we have been thinking about all of this, because what's happened is that because of the group of students who have come in, there are still like sixty-some students, right? And we want to give them the opportunities that if, for instance, they did skip a certain pathway, that we continue that they have the opportunity somewhere to still reach calculus, okay? So that's one thing that we're looking at. So it's like, it's like when you are trying to fix things, right? The, the long-term thing, you, you see the short-term plan that you have to also make sure that things are being taken care of, too, at the same time as you're building that long-term plan. I hope that makes all sense.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Are there other questions or comments about the program of study? Yes, Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Chinas, I want to ensure I heard you right. So this is, your last statement was basically as we, or as you identified some curriculum gap, you're closing that first and then looking to advance how you're doing things, adding the algebra room we were talking about before.
So what we're doing is, it's just to piggyback on what Mr. Sullivan was saying. Because what we're doing is, we're taking a look. There is a group of students who've already gone through this, the old pathway, right? And because we want to make sure, because of the how the high school scheduling is, it's very, very tight for them. So we've got to create places now for those group of students who have already gone through the old pathway, right? For them to have opportunities to reach calculus or to take another higher-level math if they want to. That's what we're looking at. So that, it's, it's as though you're building, while you're building the plan, you still have to, it's not like we're putting anything on pause. We're still looking at the long term, right? We're still looking at the curriculum. That's what happens when you do a curriculum review. You identify, okay, there's a, a spot here we need to clean up, another spot here. But there are certain spots that it's still going to go on, right? The program of studies are going to go on. We can't get in Algebra I next year in grade eight. That's too soon, too quick. But you've got to fix what you know. So if you know that, for instance, some, you need to give, get more data points, then you've got to put in those assessments, right? You can't just say, "I'm going to finish this curriculum review," and then address that. So all I'm trying to say is that as we're going through this curriculum review to get to our long-term goal, and as we're seeing some issues pop up, we've got to address them at the same time. One of them is what Mark Sullivan said, is that you'll have a group of students that went through the old pathway, that because their schedule's so tight, they may not necessarily be able to reach calculus if they want to take calculus. So we've got to look at a pathway. And that's what Katie Whitcomb is now starting to take a look at. And we've been having discussions about that. And then on the tail end, I know that Mr. Sullivan has been having conversations with Dr. Purchase about when do we put in these tests, when it's going to be fair, because there's another communication piece that needs to go out to the parents, because grade eight is a very heavy-tested year when it comes to our students and MCAS.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we're addressing the foundational gaps from middle school to high school, and it sounds like we're doing that.
All right, are there other questions?
Madam Chair, just thirty seconds, just the definition. Joe talked about dual enrollment. You may hear early college. There's lots of conversation at the state level for early college. Early college just designates a group of underrepresented students early in high school. We've been offering early college or dual enrollment courses for a very long period of time. Our district does not get the early college designation because we're not identifying the students ahead of time. Our dual enrollment courses are, throughout our program of studies, any student is eligible for them. We're not saying, we're, we're not identifying a cohort freshman year. So the state, if you're going to be designated in early college, high school or an early college district, you, you have to identify an underrepresented cohort first. So if you're asking why we don't do that, it's, it's we're choosing to sort of open it up to everybody. But we are offering college credit early.
So I, I'd like to comment that I think that these are really thoughtful changes that you're proposing in the program of studies this year. And I think that the English department is, is, maybe brave is the right word. And I appreciate the whole English department being willing to look at this kind of a shift as a pilot. I think you gave us so many reasons why it's a good idea to try it. And I, I really support that. And I also wanted to point out, just my favorite new course that you have that you didn't happen to mention tonight is the World Cultures of Burlington, which I, it's an overview of cultures that are the most commonly found cultures in Burlington. And it includes Italy, Ireland, India, Guatemala, Uganda, Zimbabwe, Haiti, Canada, and Mexico. Actually, the most commonly represented and our neighbors. So Canada and Mexico may or may not have the most number of students. But I, I think that's a brilliant idea, and I, I don't know who thought it up. But it, you know, I think it's exciting, and it's an opportunity for students to learn more about their own backgrounds and about their, their peers' backgrounds and their cultures. So that's really exciting. So thank you for all the work you've done on this. And we will do a second reading at the next time. If people have questions in the middle, Dr. Conti, can they send them to you and to Mr. Sullivan? So that we can vote on this at the next time? Because I know you need to get the program of studies settled so kids can start signing up for courses in the spring, right?
Yeah, we actually start beginning of February. So once you finalize it, we get rolling straight away. And just to answer your question, Mrs. Simon, it was the social studies department, Mr. Witten in the social studies department was behind that.
I am not surprised, but that's great. Thank Mr. Witten for us. Okay, great. All right, so the next topic.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you. Yep, good night. So we have a couple more issues here.
Again, very quickly, in one of the stipends that seem to fall through the cracks because it is not necessarily building-based, and most stipends come through a building principle, this request is actually coming from our Director of Special Ed. We've been doing a, an internal Special Olympics in partnership with Wilmington, I think for about five or six years now. It's a tremendous amount of work. And so Christina asks one of her team chairs to take that on. So she's just requesting in the addition of a Category I stipend to coordinate our Special Olympic effort. Again, this is an effort that's in addition to the Lab Collaborative Special Olympics. This is an additional event. We can certainly, I attend every year. It's, it's a phenomenal experience. I think our kids do really well with it. So I strongly support the school committee approve a Category I stipend for, for the Special Olympics as identified by the Director of Special Education.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
And seconded. Is there any further discussion? Sounds like a great idea. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, abstain, the chair votes aye. That's four, zero, zero.
Again, thank you, Madam Chair. The next agenda item, and again, I'm sorry to be rushing a little bit, but I know it's getting late. Deborah Clark, our Director of the Burlington Early Childhood Center, is looking for a tuition increase. They haven't increased the rate since the 2020-2021 school year was the last increase. I asked her generally what the increase was. It's roughly a three percent increase across the board. And the intention of the increase is to obviously help cover increased costs, but also to make the hourly rates across all the programs equal. So not every program got a three percent increase, but there were some adjustments. But it's about an average of a three percent increase. And the hourly rates now across the different programs that you saw in your handout will be, will be relatively, will be equal. So again, I support the tuition increase as proposed by Deborah Clark at the Burlington Early Childhood Center.
Do we have a motion?
Do we need one? It says update, do we need it?
I would love it if you guys supported it.
Seconded.
Okay, any discussion? Sounds like it's been well thought out. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, and the chair votes aye. That's five, zero, zero.
Again, thank you, Madam Chair. Moving on to facilities and finance. It was requested that we talk about an ESR closeout. ESR is the acronym that is attributed to some of the federal funding that came with us through the pandemic that got extended into this fiscal year. So Nicole, I'll turn it over to you, and you can explain the spreadsheet that the school committee received.
Yep, so I think, excuse me, a few months ago, I had given you a similar update. You'll notice on here, there is one that's added at the end there, the ESR III Chronic Absenteeism Recovery Initiative. That's a new one this year. Those were some ESR funds that the state had set aside, and there were three different like pathways that schools could opt into participating in. We went with the chronic absenteeism route. And just because that, the source of funding was ESR III, I added it on here. And that's $10,000 through 9/30 of 2024.
So Dr. Conti, do we have a plan for that Chronic Absenteeism Recovery Initiative?
Yeah, and it's going to be tied to our social-emotional learning to try to get kids, again, into, into school. So again, $10,000 is a lot for us individually, but we'll, we'll, we'll move through that pretty quickly and probably use it for some professional development. And I think what Ms. Concepcion had talked about was maybe some trauma-informed type of training for, for students. So, so that would be the, the ESR funding summary. I'm not sure if anyone has any specific questions, but we are, Nicole's done a great job in terms of not cliff-building, so not using grant money solely, and then having it, when the grant money goes away, have a huge hole to fill. So she's been using and adding positions that we needed through the pandemic and bringing them into the operating budget. So we have some positions to do that as the federal money runs out. But I think we are in a good position to continue to absorb those positions into fiscal '25. So you'll, you'll see that as part of the budget presentation coming up.
Okay, any further comments? Mr. Moore, and any comments on the ESR review there? If there's no hand raised, then we'll move on. Ms. Kasha, please.
Again, Madam Chair, we have the monthly financial update. So Nicole, I'm not sure if anything stands out. I didn't see anything.
No. All of our revol, our capital articles are in good standing as are our revolving, our revolving accounts. No concerns on operating or accommodated. Not much change over prior month.
Nicole, we have some projects that are sort of far past due, like a 2014, where there's just a small balance. At some point, you'll come back to the school committee and close out those accounts and then turn, turn those dollars back to the town.
Yeah, so that typically is at the end of the fiscal year is when that would, that discussion and vote would take place.
I didn't mean to preempt a question, but I sort of felt it coming. So that's, that's what sort of we would do moving, you know, moving forward. We obviously can't spend any of those funds on any other projects, so, but we will, we'll close those out and turn them back at the end of the fiscal year.
Can we just focus on capital articles for just a minute? Were there any other questions by anyone else? I'm just wondering, I, I think I looked at the two from like the last month and this month. And, and I guess the questions may be for Mr. Kuna. Is there none of these projects that have any additional work completed? I mean, I thought we were making, I, I thought there were a few we were in the middle of, and we heard some from Journey to Cares. So I'm just wondering why these numbers didn't change.
I can probably answer that for you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So probably from the prior month until this month, we had committed to spending those. So it was shown as encumbered.
Okay.
And then as it's, as the work's done, those encumbered funds move into the spent category. So you don't actually see a difference on the, the remaining balance or the percent completed.
Okay, and yet, percent completed is it, but it would mean that there's no additional percent. Is this saying that there's a percent, the percent of the project didn't change? I mean, was there work on these projects in the last month, or no? I mean, maybe not because it was the holiday. I'm just asking.
Again, through the chair, I can go through a couple in particular. I know in the last meeting, we had discussed the treads at Francis Wyman, which are complete. The playground at Francis Wyman is complete. We're working on the intercom system at Francis Wyman currently. The scoreboard is complete and installed at Marshall Simons. I'm just thinking quickly, but I can go through a couple of these. Projector installs is ongoing right now. Again, I wasn't prepared to give a full report on this, but I can go through a bunch of these. We have ordered the activity vans, the fourteen-passenger vans. So again, we're still waiting on delivery of those.
Excellent.
So there is work being done. BCC bathrooms are complete.
Okay. So when will we, when would we see that progress? Would we ever see it in this or not because we've already encumbered the money? Dr. Conti, maybe you can answer?
I just think we're asking a couple of different questions. And Nicole, again, if I'm hearing this correctly, the percent completed is not the project. The percent completed is a financial designation. So we're asking for a warrant. And if Bob has completed the project, but there's some money left, you're going to see the percent completed still not be 100%.
Sure.
So, so I think if you're looking at the, are you going to see movement in the percent completed? It would be, I think, Nicole, this is a financial document. So I think Bob and Nicole are saying two different things. Bob's saying the treads are completed, so that's 100%, but we may not have spent 100% of the money to complete that. So, so you may always see something that's shortcoming there. Am I answering your question there?
I think so, Nicole. I'm getting a, an okay from Nicole. So the percent completed is not the project completion?
Yes.
It's how much, so, so there's, there is, there could be a, a number of items where we might turn money back if they're completed, you know, like the stairwell, and it's 5% officially, financially designated, that might get returned for that kind of thing? Is that accurate? Okay, all right.
No, I was just going to say through the chair, if you don't mind. Simply, we get an estimate, ask for the warrant article funding. Then when we commit to a vendor to do the work or buy the supplies, we get quoted a price that gets earmarked. That shows the percentage of dollars spent against the fund itself. That could be phases, like let's order the supplies. Then when they come in to do the install, then they bill us additional money for labor. And then that could be a completed project, and we return money. Or it could be now we have two more stair treads to do. So now we're going to do a second billing for materials and labor. So different answers for different projects.
Right.
But almost all are ongoing and currently going.
Okay, good. And, and we heard about a lot of them in the Journey to Cares tonight, too. So that was confusing me. So thank you, I think I understand it better now.
If it would help like mitigate confusion, I can change that final column and label it percent like spent instead of completed.
Maybe, yeah. That would be more clear to me anyway. Okay, all right. Okay, and then in terms of operating budget, you didn't have any comments. It looks straightforward. Does anyone else have questions or comments? I, again, was, I don't do this every month, but it was looking, and there's some shifting that seems to be happening in some of those columns. So maybe I should just sit down and meet with you, Ms. Kasha, and you can show me how that's working. Does that sound?
Sure.
Right, okay, thank you. All right, so the next item, Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's that exciting time of year. So we have a budget calendar that Nicole has presented. Again, working back from May Town meeting. So really starting next committee meeting. And Nicole already has the spreadsheets out to folks in charge of cost centers, so principals, directors. So they'll be adding in their, their requests and their staff. And again, as we, the committee has asked us to do in the past, we are not going to set any sort of guidelines or restrictions for folks. You'll see sort of the complete unvarnished ask, and people get a chance to talk about what it is that they want. Obviously, the requests that we're getting are going to be, are going to far exceed the guideline dollars that, that we have available, and then we'll work backwards from there. So unless the school committee wants to change that process, I do think my staff, even though they may not get something, I think they do want the opportunity to explain to you what it is that they need and why. And I think it benefits you to hear that over time, because a lot of the requests won't change. And again, for instance, I'm sure it won't be a surprise if you see an Assistant Principal from Memorial School in, in this year's request. So I, I think that would be something that we're working on. So again, that's the budget calendar that we'll be following moving forward. If we do need additional time, then we will talk to you about scheduling an additional time if we need that.
So I didn't, did you send one? And I missed it in the, because there were a lot of attachments.
It should be in a packet, I believe.
Oh, okay, so I, I missed that one attachment. Thank you. Oh, okay. So I missed that one attachment. Thank you. That's fine. All right. So shall we move on?
Sure, Madam Chair. So we have the, again, Fox Hill Building Committee update. We really had a Fox Hill Building Committee prior to this, so I'm not sure much has changed in the last couple hours. But the, the, obviously, the, we have a board meeting coming up with MSBA. We have a meeting tomorrow to discuss and to hear from MSBA about what, about our submission. So probably have more of an update at our next school committee meeting, and we'll move forward with the scheduled events. I do think the, as the design comes together, the conversations, I think, get more exciting. I think staff are being asked to be more involved. And as the building starts to take shape, I think that'll build some momentum. And again, I do don't want to minimize the support that we're going to need to move a debt exclusion vote through a community that's not used to debt exclusion votes. So I know we can't necessarily be direct advocates, but I do think we need to encourage folks who are interested in seeing a new elementary school, they're really going to need to be involved in this community effort to move that forward, however it turns out.
So if I could ask you to expand on what you just said, because we had a relatively detailed conversation at the Fox Hill School Building Committee meeting earlier this evening, but you just referenced that we, as a school building committee, would not be able to be advocates for a debt exclusion. We can be communicating facts and those kinds of things. So could you explain that for people who didn't hear the conversation earlier? Dr. Conti, and then Ms. Monaco.
Well, I think, if I can.
Okay, Ms. Monaco, you can go first.
I think, Eric, you need to find out legally, because I've been involved in debt exclusion campaigns before. And the committee as a whole can't do that, but individuals can. And so I would like, before we get bad information out there, if Eric would get a legal opinion and then let us know what it says.
And I think that was going to be my answer as well. I can't really talk in detail about this, but I do think we need to have an opinion. And I'm just saying, I think the, there's, may not be a whole lot of time. We don't have, we need to think about this relatively quickly, is I guess I'm trying to say poorly.
So you'll get back to us on that?
I will.
Okay. So there'll be clarification coming. Okay.
Burlington High School, the building committee has its meeting coming up on Thursday. And so that meeting is.
6:30.
Thursday at 6:30, right here. So I'll look forward to seeing everyone there. I think we'll have more of a meeting, more of an update after that meeting. I have been in touch with the OPM, and we are beginning, starting work on the program summary, which you know was an important document for Fox Hill. I think the program document for the high school is going to be far more detailed. So Mark is involved, Mr. Sullivan's involved. That's sharing schedule, program of studies, everything, because we want the building to be able to house the program that we offer. So I think that's sort of the step that they're working on, but we'll have a summary there.
And then I was just going to say that the designer applications are due Thursday. So we'll have the result of how many people have replied. Is that true?
They were due Monday.
Oh, I thought it said Thursday on my sheet, but.
So Thursday, I think, is when you guys are going to, Terry.
Discuss it, right.
Is going to go over all that with you.
And then I reviewed the survey sheet that he'll be distributing with Terry, the OPM, last Friday. So we'll get something rolled out once we, you know, I just kind of had a few questions on how he put that together. And then that'll get rolled out, and we'll get a, we have our committee already selected for that, too. So.
I don't know if you want.
I'd love to get an update on the submissions.
We had two responses received for designers. One was Jonathan Levy Architects, and the other one was Tapi Architects. And I think Terry will get into some more details, because it's going to change sort of the way that we were originally anticipating evaluating. Whereas there's only two, we don't really need a method to shortlist. So, but we can discuss that more on Thursday.
Okay. All right. And our last agenda item, Dr. Conti?
Panglen. I just, committee has asked us to do a report at the January Town Meeting about the upcoming warrant that we're going to ask for the additional funding needed for the Panglen air conditioner. I think we're going to be informing, so Bob put together a one-pager that is going to do that. So I wanted, I think one was in your packet, but I wanted to share that with folks to get some feedback. So I want to thank Bob for his efforts. But we just go through a bit of history to educate Town Meeting. And I think an important part of educating Town Meeting is that we're going to be maintaining four elementary schools moving forward. And so, and so that the need to air condition that building sort of was determined when the vote to maintain four elementary schools was there. And then we just go through a bit of a history. So I hope this meets what the school committee's expectation was for us to sort of do a three-minute report at Town Meeting in January. So I just have to ask the moderator for a two or three-minute spot, which I think he will, he will allow. And then again, our plan is to have this available or send this out to Town Meeting members and to really just talk from the sheet. And I think that Bob and I will do that presentation together.
Does anyone have any questions? Ms. Masardo?
Does the four-school model, does it make more sense to address Panglen in there? So the new Fox Hill will only be Fox Hill, and thus, like, at least point to Panglen there, so that they don't have to draw the line? You know what I mean? Like, so we will maintain Panglen as-is? I think was kind of one of the wordings we used.
Yep. I think that's great feedback. Thank you.
And I would like to ask about, under G and a C, under G, it says that the results returned with a low bid of $890,000. But the town project cost estimate at C is estimated at $850,000. So I'm wondering what the discrepancy is there.
So through the chair, thank you.
Dr. Mr. Conti, thank you. Mr. Kuna.
Thanks. So if anyone has it noticed, PGAC is the Panglen Air Conditioning. I tried to make that reference with the first letters of each word.
Very nice.
Under G, so a couple of things happened. Once we went out to bid just for the project alone, that came back $890,000. That was a single vendor, so we didn't have any competition on that. Because we couldn't afford that, we looked at other avenues. Since then, we went out to bid for a district-wide HVAC vendor, which we now have onboard with us. That HVAC vendor is the person that gave us a quote for less than $890,000, which is why we're asking for approximately $850,000. The estimate is a little bit less than that. But again, as we've seen in the past, projects change over time. We're a few months away from actually putting this in place if we do get the funding. So with a little bit of contingency and so forth, $850,000 seems very comfortable for us to make this project work. But that's why it's less than the $890,000, because the bid is no longer valid for us.
So it was a different vendor, and we got a different bid?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions on this? No? Thank you for putting the work into that, too.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
We have four seconds for that. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The chair votes aye. We are adjourned.